Have a list, I was asked earlier by Senator Villar in fairness to him. The list will conclude Senator Villanueva. Number two is Senator Villar, number three is Senator Daxson, number four is Senator Pangirinan, and number five is Senator Pacquiao. Number six is Senator Marcos, number seven is Senator Poe. Eight is Senator Andiveros, nine is Senator Go, ten is Senator Caetano. Eleven is Mr. Pimentel, twelve is Mr. Angara, thirteen is Mr. Villar. Senator Villanueva, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and first of all, let me thank you for this opportunity and for calling for another hearing. Let me also state for the record that in the very, very first hearing of this committee, I share the sentiments of our Senate President, Minority Floor Leader, and yourself, Mr. Chairman. Because during that first hearing, we already asked for this listing, Mr. Chairman. If you would recall, even the medicines that are about to expire or expired, where they are in the catch-up plan of DOH. But now, we will continue to wait, Mr. Chairman. I'll go straight to the point, Mr. Chairman, let me first ask Mr. Wang Zuyen, the Chairman of Pharmaly Pharmaceutical Corporation. Sir, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, my first question, just for the record, you are the Chairman of Pharmaly Pharmaceutical Corporations, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Yes, and it was incorporated in September twenty nineteen, is that the correct statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Yes, and in the twenty twenty audited financial statements, you submitted that your total assets in cash is five hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred fifty pesos. This is reflected in your twenty twenty audited financial statements, is that correct? I am showing you the copy of what you submitted after audited the financial statement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is the number reflected in our financial statement.
In the same, in the same man, let me show you what you submitted. I couldn't see anything like loans or disclosed loans in the twenty twenty audited financial statements. Now, let me go to last hearing, last hearing, in the Blue Ribbon Committee hearing, September seventh.
Excuse me, excuse me, Senator Villanueva, I didn't mind to want to disturb your train of thought. There is an echo coming in, it sounds like a Chinese guy is interpreting. Do you have an earpiece? Mr. Wang?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I don't need interpreter, I'm fluent in English. I think.
What about that headphones? Is somebody dictating to you what the answers you're gonna be giving?
No, no one. I don't, I think it's coming from this, from my screen, it seems it's DOH ten Director Joe. So some, there's some noise coming from there, not me.
Okay, uh, will everybody please unmute? I'd rather mute DOH ten, I can see Director Jose R L. Can you unmute please? I'd rather can you go to mute? Lacuna? Jose Lacuna, please mute. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I wanted to.
Thank you very much. So last hearing, let me just point this out, last hearing, I was reading at the transcript of the last hearing. Mr. Lau made mention, hindi po, when a question was asked, whether advanced payment was made by the government to Pharmaly Pharmaceutical Corporation before delivery of goods. And Mr. Lau answered saying no, despite we are authorized to make advanced payments, we constrain ourselves from paying advanced payments. In fact, we only paid full payment to Pharmaly after full delivery, after inspection, and after acceptance by DOH. Now, my question, sir, being the Chairman of Pharmaly Pharmaceutical Corp., how did you finance the April fourteen twenty twenty initial order of two point four million pieces of face masks totaling fifty-four million pesos? Uh, again, as I showed you earlier, I did not see any loans, financial loans in your audited financial statements submitted by Pharmaly.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. To answer the question, when I first started the comp, when we started company with my partners in Pharma, Pharmaly Pharmaceutical Corporation, the goal, we were startup, we didn't envision the need to use a lot of capitalization as the primary business was to introduce good pharma companies to come invest in Philippines. So, that is that, but.
Mr. Chairman, you are not answering my question. My only question is how did you finance? Because it is very clear, I showed you earlier, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, you submitted your twenty twenty audited financial statement, five ninety-eight thousand. You, you and Mr. Lau said, uh, they, they, they only paid you after the inspection and acceptance by DOH. This is just the first order, Mr. Chairman, first order amounting to fifty-four million pesos in April fourteen twenty twenty. So I wonder, where did you get the money?
Um, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, we have access to the inventories of our suppliers. And what we do is we negotiate preferential payment terms with these inventories, with these suppliers, so that we can get the head, the stock ahead.
Mr. Chairman, let me just place this on record, if, again, if I may show you the audited financial statements, it doesn't say anything about your inventory. In fact, if you look at the twenty nineteen up to twenty twenty, there's nothing, Mr. Chairman. I just want to put that on record. Another question that I'd like to ask, there.
What is the answer, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I refer to inventories, I didn't refer to the company's inventories. We have access to the supplier's inventories, so that we can relocate these supplies to deliver first.
Which was not reflected, Mr. Chairman, in their twenty twenty audited financial statement. Again, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the supplies, the inventory, it's not there, Mr. Chairman. As I made mention earlier, this is just the first order, fifty-four million. Let me just go continue, Mr. Chairman, no? Uh, let me ask. Yes, the Chair.
The indulgence of San Joel.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With the permission of Senator Joel, Senator Andiveros, to try to let the, our colleague finish, because I think unless you have something really paramount to comment, go ahead.
Well, directly related.
Well, he may be laying the predicate for that question, so I would like to ask you to let him finish, so you can come in later and I will allow you, okay? Is that okay with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I thought he was moving to another question earlier. But if not, San Joel, then I will, it was a follow-up to the question that you had just asked.
Yeah, can we let you finish and you can make the follow-up, I will allow follow-up. Thank you, go ahead, Senator Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, San Risa, I would just like to just lay the predicate here, no? Another question that I'd like to ask is, if you have employees at Pharmaly, sir, how many employees do you have?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have seven full-time employees. While during the course of our transactions, we employ ad hoc employees, so that deliveries are timely, timely delivered.
Seven, Mr. Chairman, just seven employees?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have seven full-time employees on our payroll. But to facilitate with all the deliveries, we do hire ad hoc employees to in terms of packing and deliveries, so we are very nimble in that aspect.
Okay, seven full-time employees plus probably you hire a contract of service job-order employees. Do you pay SSS, Phil Health, Pag Ibig contributions, Chairman Yen, Zuyen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but for our full-time, well, for our full-time, I think we believe we pay all the necessary benefits.
That's, that's, that's what you believe, sir, no? Because I have documents here stating that you have zero contribution to government-mandated contributions of Phil Health, Pag Ibig, and SSS. And so, at this juncture, Mr. Chairman, may I request the committee to request, if not subpoenaed, these documents showing proof, Mr. Chairman, showing proof of payment by Pharmaly of government-mandated contributions.
May I understand, you're asking him to submit documents of proof of payment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, because I have some documents here, Mr. Chairman, that states that not Pharmaly did not pay or contribute, Mr. Chairman, to this government-mandated contributions, SSS.
I think the candidate is well within his rights to confront him with your statement, and if he says no, then he's lying. So, can you show him the document that says he's not, he's not been paying, they're not been paying?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
It is the same document that we received, Mr. Chairman, from the Blue Ribbon Committee. And as I asked the question a while ago, the Chairman of Pharmaly made mention that they are paying SSS and the Pag Ibig and the Phil Health, Mr. Chairman.
If you approve to the contrary, you just confronted him, and if he says yes, then he could be liable for false testimony.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have here with me, Mr. Chairman, but I am not sure if I'm allowed to, to share this in public. But with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I can show it.
Go ahead.
That if you look at the annual income tax return, Mr. Chairman, SSS, GSIS, Phil Health, zero point oh, Mr. Chairman, we can show it if you, if you may.
All right, you have been confronted with that incontrovertible proof that you have not paid your contributions. What do you say, Mr. Wang?
Um, Mr. Chairman, allow me time to collect the records from our company to show that we do, as I recall, our company do pay for this welfare. But let me provide and collect these records to counter that statement.
Well, you've been confronted with your income tax payments, which include all your expenses, including GSIS, SSS, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Senator Villanueva?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I think you're a certified public accountant this year, I will give you all the, what is her name? Would the CPA of Pharmaly please speak up?
Illuminada.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Illuminada. Ms. Illumi, Illuminada Sebial.
Sebial, opo.
Nagpapalit ko ba ng SSS, GSIS, or SSS, eh, GSIS, SSS, at saka, uh, ang dalat nating Pag Ibig? Yes, Mr. Sebial, please answer the question.
I will check there, sir, I will check after this, sir.
Excuse me?
I will check.
You resp, I'm sorry. She will check, she will check, would you mind taking your mask off?
I will check the records, sir.
Mister, Mister Chairman, can I make a manifestation? This is Senator Villar.
Yes, you're recognized.
Okay, you know, I'm in business. Minsan kasi 'yung kompanya distributor lang of a bigger company in China. So you cannot expect them to be big, but they can deliver a lot of products because they are doing it in behalf of a bigger company in China, they don't really have to pay, they just get a commission for what they're doing. So we just make sure that this Pharmaly is really an operating company that takes the risk or they're just distributor from China. Kasi 'yung mga nadinig ko before, parang nanggaling sa China 'yung mga product. Parang sila lang dito sa Pilipinas ang nag, nag, ano tawag dun, nagbid, ganun. But actually, the one providing the capital is the bigger company in China. So, it's really a model also, a model also, and that should be considered also. Kaya hindi kailangan malaking malaki 'yung kompanya dito, kung sila ay distributor lang na isang malaking kompanya sa China, na 'yung taga-China ang nagfinance ng lahat ng mga product nila na ibebenta dito sa Pilipinas. I just want to clarify that, because that is a business model also. So I just want to clarify if that's how they do their business, or they're really the supplier. I, I am just, ano, kasi nasa business tayo, nakikita natin 'yung ibang kompanya, ganyan. Hindi naman sila malaki sa Pilipinas, they're just representing a big company in China that wants to do business in the Philippines. I just want to have it clarified para maliwanag tayo. Or they're the one doing it, or they're representing a big company in China, that's all. Thank you very much.
Your point has been made, and I think Senator Joel was just asking whether they pay SSS to their Filipino employees.
That's mandated by our laws, Mr. Chairman, and perhaps it's also important to note whether Pharmaly is just a middleman, Mr. Chairman. Again, the records will show, and I have, I have shown you the record, six hundred thousand 'yung kanilang assets, capital assets, cash, pero nakakuha ng billion-billion na project. So, I'll go to that, Mr. Chairman, but I think it's important to note, na importante 'yung tinatanong natin, Mr. Chairman, last hearing, nabanggit natin 'yung mga nawalan ng trabaho.
Bahan ng SSS ka rin.
Wala na trabaho, hindi pa nagco-contribute sa ating government-mandated contributions. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I will continue if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Just a moment, I just want to put it on record that the question is appropriate, because you're asking them, as a company doing business here, whether they do pay SSS. It's not a question of whether they're an agent or a distributor or whatnot. When they have employees, they should pay the SSS, that's your point, isn't it, Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are correct.
All right, the point has been made then, okay. Continue, Mr. Wang, are you going to speak up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do, we do have records of our company paying for SSS. I, I don't entirely sure to which specific welfare, but based on my recollection, all proper welfares should be paid to the employees for our company.
Well, you will appreciate the fact that I asked you a certified public accountant, and she still has to check, and you have to check, that's a simple question. Uh, now you can answer. In Tagalog, dapat alam mo 'yan, you should know, because kung di mo alam 'yan, then you're a poor businessman. You're, you're a little businessman, sabi nga ni Senator Villar, pero ang hinahawa kang pera, the money that you're, you're being paid by this government goes to the billions of pesos. So your littleness doesn't have anything to do with your obligations to the little people of this country. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, we are here to ferret out the truth. Kung meron, kung dokumento, we will be happy to look into it, because what we have right now, as I mentioned earlier, wala po, no? Uh, let me continue, Mr. Chairman, by asking our PSDBN, perhaps the former PSDBN Undersecretary, Christopher Lau. Um, can I ask you, Mr. Lau, you're there? Mr. Christopher Lau?
Present.
Yes, yes, sir, I would just like to ask you, ano ho 'yung kinakandak nun 'yung due diligence para ho kumili ng supplier natin, sino po 'yung in charge dito? Paano po 'yung process nito, because at the end of the day, this is in aid of legislation, we wanted to find out if the system works, if there are lapses in the system, and how we can improve the system.
Okay, um, we get documentary requirements based on the law. During that time, wala pong requirement ang bayanihan one. We just got some guidance based on the previous law, which is procurement law, which is RA nine one eight four. So basically, we ask for the income tax return, the omnibus warrant statement, the mayor's permit, and 'yung mga technical requirements po na bibilhin namin, that they should also have submitted in technical specifications. Other than that, there is no requirement by law, so that's basically.
Sir, you mentioned about your examination of perhaps financial statements of the company, did you say it right?
Warrant statement lang po.
I'm sorry?
Omnibus warrant statement.
So 'yung financial statements, hindi niyo chincheck yon as part of your process in checking the financial statements of a bidder?
Hindi po required yun, Mr. Chairman, so it's not required by law. And even sa regular procurement, hindi po siya required.
But don't you think it is important, sir, to find out if the supplier can actually supply? Because I have here with me itong twenty twenty audited financial statements ng Pharmaly. At makikita nga po natin dito, hindi lang kaninang binabanggit natin 'yung kapital, kung hindi. For example, sir, ito sa twenty twenty, ang kanilang kapital ay napakaliit lamang, pero dire-diretso pa rin ho 'yan, no, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, tapos twenty twenty-one, nakakakuha pa rin po sila ng mga kontrata, no? Did you clarify the following figures before awarding Pharmaly several documentaries? For example, thirty-three million in donations, one point thirty-five million in salaries. Let me focus on that, one point thirty-five million salaries. Kanina ho binanggit 'yung chairman, may lima, pito silang na empleyado, no? Sa buong taon, that's only one point thirty-five million. Kung meron kang CEO na making about hundred thousands, thousand pesos, plus thirteen month pay, that's one point three million na already. So, parang isa lang ba 'yung empleyado nito? Kaya nakakapagta kayo pitong empleyado na full-time, plus 'yung mga pinapasweldo pahuli lang iba. Hindi ho ba ito kasama sa pinag-aaralan bago i-award ang isang kontrata?
Um, hindi po siya part of the documents, Mr. Chairman.
So hindi po, okay. Um, 'yung field jets po, hindi ho ba kailangan may field jets na, na part sila? Because field jets actually accredited them, in fact, I think in June, naging platinum po sila. Si, si ano ba in charge ng field jets?
Um, Director Rosa is in charge, but during that time, Mr. Chairman, hindi po kasi siya required under bayanihan one. Um, so if we did not make a look into that, we only looked at the basic documents that for us to assure us, kahit hindi ho required ang batas na to get documents, we just check on it. Mayor's permit, I T R N O S S. Ang basic po na guidance talaga ng during that time is to get the items delivered. And to protect the interest of the government, we refrain from parting our money, hindi ho kami nagbabayad. That's the safeguard na ginawa namin, hindi kami pagbubayad until ma-deliver. So if you don't have capacity.
Binanggit niyo po yon, and I agree with that, sir, no, and I agree with that. Again, we are here to improve our system. Now that this has happened, do you think it's important now that we look into this? Because I think parang common sense siguro na kailangan tingnan to, because you can easily figure out that there are red flags already, just by looking at the audited financial statement.
It is upon the wisdom of the Legislative Department, Mr. Chairman, to.
If you are to be asked, to say it should be?
Your Honor, we just implement what is the law. Kung sa wisdom po, it's be rely on Senate to legislate the laws.
Sige, I'll, I'll, I'll ask the field jets, no? Kasi ano pa 'yung ginagawa ng field jet, naiscreen ba talaga nila? If, if I may ask, who is in charge ng field jet? Naiscreen po ba nila? Kasi if you look at this audited financial statement, easily, you can, you can, you would have this question marks sa 'yung pag-iisip na kaya ba nilang mag-supply? Itong, itong salaries and wages, one point three million, tapos bibigyan mo ng billion na kontrata, et cetera. Baka nga, dito pa lang, makita mo na middleman lang ito, field jets?
Hi, good afternoon, good afternoon, Your Honors. With regards to your question, actually, the field jets office, the field jets registration is not an accreditation. You can see that under section.
Actually, ano po ginagawa ng field jets? Ma'am, ito na lang ho, anong proteksyon ang inyong binibigay para sa ating mga taxpayers to ensure na legitimate at maayos 'yung nabibigyan natin ng kontrata? Kasi noong kung June eight twenty twenty-one, in fact, in upgrade niyo pa ho to platinum status, 'yung Pharmaly? Ni ko alam kung ano 'yung basis for that?
Actually, we check the completeness of the documents as required under the IRR of RA nine two one eight four. What is required is the Class A eligibility documents to include the registration certificate, which is the SEC certificate, mayor's permit, tax clearance, the audited financial statement stamp received by the DIR. And then there should be accompanied by a sworn statement in a form that is prescribed by the Policy Board, that documents submitted are complete and authentic copies of the original, and all statements and information are true and correct.
So, ma'am, ma'am, thank you po for saying that, no? 'Yung list na binanggit niyo, hindi ho kasama dun sa list na yon, 'yung financial statements ng isang kompanya?
It is included, audited financial statements, stamp.
And that's my question, because looking at it, hindi ho pa kahinahinala itong financial statements na sinadmit ng Pharmaly? Paano po sila ma-credit and at the same time, ma-upgrade, na-upgrade po sila to platinum?
Actually, we don't check the.
So hindi yun is.
For, for example, for a while, we don't check the, the document as to the, if they are financially capable or if they are technically capable. What we check in the system is the documents are complete. A merchants registration under the, the field jets is not contract-specific nor understood to be tantamount to finding an eligibility.
Hindi niyo check kung kaya nilang deliver 'yung kanilang pinapa nga ko?
Sir, it is the box responsibility. The field jets is just a registry of suppliers. It is a secretary of documents, sir.
And that is the reason, Mr. Chairman, I'm raising this, because parang wala din pong nangyayari na screening talaga, no? Let me go to the last point.
With the permission of Senator Villanueva. Didn't you check, as sinabi ni Undersecretary Lau, na 'yung mantra niyo, basta nagsabit sila, para sinasabi niya, bahala na si Batman. Eh, kung talagang hindi maka-deliver, nakita niya maraming kuwan, hindi nakadeliver, sino ang lugi? Sinong lugi?
I mean.
Di ba malulugi ang tao, Mr. Lau?
Pag hindi sila nakadeliver, Mr. Chairman, they will not be paid, and they will be blacklisted for a year.
I don't care about the blacklist thing, that is why you have to look, do your duty, due diligence, hindi ba? You have to check the financial records, you have to check the technical capability, and you have to technical, you have to check their capability to deliver. Hindi ba? Kaya nga may two envelope eh. You check the technical capability, you check the financial capability. Kung hindi na sila pamasa don, talo sila, pag hindi niyo ginawa yan, eh, hindi niyo ginagawa ang tungkulin ninyo. Medyo napupundi ako dun sa sinasabi niyo, hindi ako nagagalit, eh, sinasabi ko lang. Para naman yun nilolo ko, 'yung mga gumawa ng batas dito, na 'yan ang patakaran, hindi niyo sinusunod. Eh, kung hindi nga nag-deliver, ay, iba blacklist namin sila, in the meantime, bale wala sa inyo na madidelay. Una, may delay na pag kaya hindi nakadeliver. All right, now, with the permission of Joel Villanueva, let me just ask somebody that I invited here, Raymond Abrea, are you there? Mr. Raymond Abrea? Uh, can you please, uh, there you go, all right. I heard you on TV the other day, and you said you had a critique. I will give you with the permission of Senator Villanueva, just an overview for the senators and for the public. And we can say in Tagalog, mas maganda, para maintindihan ang tao. Tama ba 'yung mga ginawang procedure yon? Bakit tayo kailangan na, ah, nitong mga, ano kailangan, di ba? Sabi mo, only registered in September twenty nine, twenty nineteen, pero what was able to engage in government procurement immediately, tama ba yan?
Opo, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you will allow me, I have prepared three slides para pumaunawaan ng committee at ng ating mga kababayan.
With the permission of my colleagues, para maliwanagan natin, kung ano talaga ang ground rules, at 'yung mga tao nanunood, maliwanagan 'yung ground rules. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, ito po 'yung pinatawag na basic due diligence or financial analysis.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification.
Senator Pangirinan, can you please allow me to finish you this with the.
I just wanna know, what is his expertise? Uh, it was not placed.
He's a CPA.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
He's an accounting firm, go ahead.
Ito po, dahil po nga dun sa inquiry ng media, binigay po sa atin ang mga dokumento mula sa SEC. At ito po ay inanalyze ng aming opisina, at ako po mismo ang nag-aral. So, sa basic due diligence for financial analysis, importante po na maunawaan natin 'yung basic company background. Sino ba 'yung kompanya na kung saan ta, kanino tayo makikipagtransact? At dito po sa usapin, malinaw po Pharmaly Pharmaceutical. At dito po sa usapin, uh, malinaw po Farmali Pharmaceutical na narehistro lamang 'nung September four, twenty nineteen. Uh, sa kanila pong line of business or industry, G four six four two one, ito po ang ibig sabihin nito, sila po ay nagre-histro bilang wholesaler, hindi po manufacturer, kundi wholesaler ng mga medicinal at pharmaceutical products. At malinaw din po sa kanilang primary purpose na sila po ay importer. Meaning pwedeng mag-import ng mga produkto, pero hindi po nakalagay sa kanilang notes to financial statements kung sila po ay nagkaroon ng importers license. Ngayon, sa kanila namang pong principal office, malinaw po at kahit sa previous hearing sinabi na Port Victoria Tower, Bitagik City, pero ang opisina po ay hindi nakadeklara bilang asset ng kumpanya or kung ito ay inuupahan dahil wala pong lease agreement or rent expense na kin-lame ang Farmali Corporation. Pagdating namang po sa mga incorporators, importante po ang mga personalidad o ang management ng kumpanya na nagtatransact tayo. Uh, tatlo po sa kanilang incorporators ay nagdeklara ng parehas na residence address. At, uh, napansin po namin sa articles of incorporation, uh, ang kanilang mga tin number or tax identification number ay narehistro lamang mula twenty sixteen hanggang twenty nineteen. At si Jay Garado ang pinakahuling nakakukuha ng tin, or tax identification number, 'nung March five, twenty nineteen. Ano pong ibig sabihin nito? Ibig sabihin po, uh, itong taon lamang sila nagsimulang magtrabaho or magnegosyo sa Pilipinas dahil importante po ang tin, alam po ng lahat ng ating kababayan kahit mga empleyado or minimum wage earners. Pagdating namang po sa kanilang puhunan, ang initial capital, which is malinaw, uh, alam na po ng lahat, six hundred twenty-five thousand. Gusto ko lamang pong banggitin na nabanggit naman ni Senator Villanueva, na kapag ikaw ay importer, uh, ikaw ay dapat may, uh, letter of credit or sa banko, bank-to-bank ang transaksyon. Uh, wala pong disclosure kung ano po 'yung banko nila, at, uh, kung nakakuha sila ng letter of credit para bank-to-bank ang transaksiyon sa pag-iimport ng mga goods. Hindi rin po nakadeklara kung may related party transactions or may nagpondo mula sa ibang kumpanya, uh, na related sa Farmali. Uh, sa nature of business po, malinaw po na...
Sir, hindi ko alam kung saan ang galing 'yung perang six hundred twenty-five thousand?
Ano po, Mr. Chairman?
Hindi ko alam kung saan ang galing 'yung perang six hundred twenty-five thousand pesos, at tatanungin mo ngayon kung saan din gagabitin 'yung pambayad sa gobyerno?
Opo.
Iba-bayad sa gobyerno, um, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
At the nature of business po, at kung tayo ay makikipagtransact sa kahit anong kumpanya, syempre titignan natin ano ang kanilang resources. Bilang wholesaler, dapat mo may inventario, may equipment, or may warehouse. Pero sa kanila pong audited financial statement, katulad po ng kanilang opisina, walang lease agreement or walang rent expense na kin-lame, at hindi rin namang po siya nakadeklara bilang asset ng kumpanya. Um, syempre importante din na malaman natin ano ba ang produkto o serbisyo ng kumpanya na, uh, kung saan tayo makikipagtransact. Wala din pong nakadisclose kung ano ang kanilang produkto, at kung ito ay imported goods, gusto ko lamang pong klaruhin dahil sa mga kumpanyang tinutulungan natin, kahit po sila may problema sa B I R, hindi po nila isasarado dahil mahirap pong kumuha ng importers license. Dahil maliban sa talagang may background checking, N B I clearance, eh, kailangan patunayan mo na saan ang opisina, i-oocular ang warehouse, may proof of financial capacity, may bang certificate, at dapat i-endorse on ang district collector ng customs. So, hindi din po malinaw sa kanilang notes to financial statements kung sila po ay nagkaroon ng ganitong, uh, uh, kung sila po ay nakapagsecure ng importers license. At sa customer naman po, uh, syempre high risk po ang kumpanya na, na walang list, uh, walang masyadong kliyente. At sa pagkakataon nito, parang lumalabas, gobyerno lang ang kanilang kliyente. Kaya 'yung field jets, uh, registration ay mahalaga dahil dun mang gagaling 'yung tax clearance mula sa B I R. Ito po ay company background lamang po, para po mas maintindihan ang ating, uh, committee at ng mga kababayan natin kung bakit dapat, uh, bigyan pansin. 'Yung audited financial statements, lahat po ng kumpanya ay, uh, nagre-histro at namumuhunan. Uh, sa accounting po, tinatawag 'yan na accounting equation. Dapat pong mapatunayan natin kung ano 'yung mga resources, uh, at saan ang galing o 'yung sinasabi nating sources. Sa pagkakataon pong ito, 'nung twenty nineteen, 'nung sila ay nagre-histro, ang kanilang pagmamayari o resources ay, uh, ang six hundred twenty-five thousand na cash investment. So, dun po ang ga- 'yun po 'yung kanilang kapital. Ang dapat pong malinawin ang committee is tulad ng nabanggit ng ating mabuting Senator Villanueva, 'nung sila po ay nag-purchase ng seven point two billion, based po sa kanilang notes to financial statements, hindi po naging malinaw kung 'yung seven point two billion ay ilutang or additional investment dahil wala po sa kanilang notes to, uh, financial statements. Ulitin ko lamang po na karamihan sa mga importers gumagamit ng letter of credit. Maliban na lamang po kung sila po ay may dollar account or may account doon sa bansa, kung saan sila nagtatransact para mas mabilis ang pagbabayad or transaksiyon pagdating dun sa negosyasyon ng presyo at pagbabayad. Pagdating ng, uh, pagtatapos ng twenty twenty, mula six hundred twenty-five thousand, ito na po ang kanina na accumulate na assets. Bigyan pansin lang po natin 'yung sinasabi natin na inventario. Required po sa Bureau of Internal Revenue na isumiti kung nasaan po ang mga inventario at ang halaga nito. Uh, wala pong deklarasyon kung nasaan po ang warehouse, at kung, at kung ito po ay rehistrado sa B I R dahil hindi po tayo pwedeng magdeklara ng inventario kung wala pong inventario. So, 'yung one hundred twenty-one million na inventario, um, hindi po malinaw kung nasaan siya dahil wala pong warehouse na nakadeklara. Pagdating namang po dun sa sources, sa kanilang twenty twenty audited financial statements, uh, meron silang one point seven million na diniklarang liability, pero mas, uh, malaki din po ang diniklaran nilang deferred tax. Ibig sabihin po buwis na hindi pa binabayaran, nagkakahalaga na seventeen point, uh, eighty-eight million pesos. At ang kanilang kapital, two hundred eighty-four. Hindi pa po ito 'yung financial highlights or analysis. Uh, pumunta po tayo sa pangatlong slides. Uh, dito po mas mauunawaan natin na 'yung increase na forty-four thousand, one hundred forty-nine percent ay, uh, hindi po normal. Hindi po ito, uh, sana po lahat ng kumpanya, ganyan ang nangyayari, na sa maliit na puhunan ay malaki kaagad ang kapital. At hindi ko po sinasabi na ito ay ilegal o, uh, suspicious. Ang sinasabi lang natin, hindi po normal, hindi po ordinaryo na nagkakaroon ng ganito kalaking, uh, increase. So, pumunta po tayo sa financial highlights para mas maintindihan natin kung bakit mahalaga na tinignan natin o pinag-aralan natin 'yung financial statements ng kahit anong kumpanya, na kung saan tayo magtatransact. Mula po sa six hundred twenty-five thousand kapital na paulit-ulit na po natin narinig, sila po ay nagdeklara ng seven point five billion sales. Ibig sabihin po, meron po 'yang halos isang bilyon na value-added tax nababayaran kung wala po silang kin-lame na input tax. Pero base po sa kanilang, uh, balance sheet, audited balance sheet, sila po ay nagclaim pa ng excess, excess input. Ibig sabihin, mas malaki pa 'yung, uh, hindi po, hindi, maaring hindi sila nagbayad ng VAT. At B I R po ang pwedeng mag-check niyan, kasi po, uh, audited financial statements lang ang ating, uh, tinignan. At ito po ay nagresulta sa two hundred sixty-five million na profit. Ibig sabihin po, uh, sa kanilang five point twenty-five percent na margin, bilang wholesaler, sila po ay kumita ng two hundred sixty-five million profit or forty-two thousand three hundred forty-four point twenty-four percent return on investment. Uh, maaring tama po 'yung isang, uh, Senator na sinabi na, uh, kahit maliit ang puhunan, pwedeng magtransact ng malaki. Pero hindi po naging malinaw kung paano po nila pininance o, uh, pinatakbo ang kanilang operasyon. At ang isa pa pong, uh, source ng income nila na dapat bigyang linaw ng committee, 'yung tinatawag, 'yung diniklaran nilang foreign exchange gains. Kasi po wala po silang pera, pero nagdeklara po sila ng halos, uh, isandaang million na foreign exchange gains. Ibig sabihin po, sila po ay may, uh, foreign currency. Uh, twenty-nine million po ang nasa notes to financial statements, at ang kanila pong sinasabing unrealized foreign currency, uh, foreign exchange gains ay umabot ng sixty-three million. Kaya po sila nagdeklara, pumaalala niyo kanina dun sa accounting equation, nagdeklara po sila ng eighteen million deferred tax. Ibig sabihin po, hindi pa po nila binabayaran 'tong tax na 'to dahil unrealized pa 'yung foreign currency gains nila. At ito po, uh, ang two hundred sixty-five billion, sila po ay nagkaroon ng provision for income tax na one hundred thirteen million. Mapapansin po natin na thirty percent corporate income tax ang ginamit nila dahil, uh, nag-file sila bago pa ang epektybity ng create law. Pero ang nababayaran na lang po nila ay ninety-five million, at meron din silang kin-lame na excess tax credit or sobrang withhold din ng, uh, gobyerno, kung gobyerno lang talaga ang kanilang kliyente dahil nagwi-withhold po ng two percent ang kliyente. So, ito po 'yung sa income side. Pagdating namang po dun sa expense or cost side, ito po 'yung kanina nating binanggit, sa six hundred twenty-five thousand na kapital o puhunan, sila po ay nakapag-import ng seven point two billion na purchases. Mahalaga pong malaman kung anong panahon o buwan na import ang mga inventario na 'to dahil nagpasapu tayo ng Republic Act one-one-four-nine-four or Bayanihan two. At base po sa Revenue Regulation twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty, exempted po sa VAT, sa excise, at sa ibang fees and other fees ang mga import, uh, ang pag-import ng mga COVID-related supplies and equipment. So, uh, wala po sa disclosure kasi kung ano, kung kailan po at ano 'yung schedule ng seven point two billion na purchases. Uh, pero meron po silang kin-lame na seventy million freight duties, taxes, and brokerage fees. Siguro po, uh, customs po makakapagpatunay kung ito pong mga expenses na 'to ay nabayaran at ibig sabihin may importers license po sila. Kasi po may mga kumpanya na nakakapag-import pero walang importers license dahil dumadaan sila sa broker. Or may ibang kumpanya na nag-i-import para sa kanila at binabayaran na lamang nila ito. Kung ito ay inaallow ng customs or hindi, uh, customs lang po makasagot nun. Uh, then sa liability po nila, medyo dapat lang pong bigyan linaw ng auditor dahil sa kanilang cash flow statement, meron po silang, uh, diniklaran na sixty-one million na liabilities. Pero pagdating po sa balance sheet note, note to financial statements number ten, one point seventy-five million na lamang ang kanilang liability. At dito po, lumalabas, meron o one point five million na advances from customers. Kung ang kliyente lamang po nila ay gobyerno, ibig sabihin, advances from government po, 'yung nasa notes, uh, to financial statement number ten po. At lumalabas po two hundred thousand ang kanilang accounts payable or pagkakauntang sa kanilang supplier. Then sa kanila namang pong, uh, capital expenditure, mula sa six hundred twenty-five thousand napuhunan na cash, sila po ay nakapag-invest ng thirteen million na motor vehicles. Hindi po malinaw kung anong motor vehicle ito, kung ito po ba ay motor, motorsiklo, sa sakyan, wala pong deklarasyon. Uh, at dapat po meron, kasi din-depreciate po siya. Uh, then container vans worth two hundred fifty thousand pesos, at, uh, computers worth two hundred seventy-six thousand pesos. At, uh, ang isa lamang pong dapat bigyan linaw din, uh, 'yung kanilang, uh, sa salaries. Uh, alam niyo po, sa Bureau of Internal Revenue, required din po ang mga kumpanya, katulad namin, na magsumite ng alpha lease ng kanilang mga empleyado. Sila po ay nagdeklara ng one point four million na salaries, pero ang kanilang donations ay umabot ng thirty-three million. At ito po ay subject sa six percent donor's tax unless otherwise mapatunayan nila na ang mga donasyon na 'to ay may kinalaman sa, uh, COVID or sa B I R accredited foundation. Bakit po ito nakalagay sa financial highlights? Kasi po seventy-nine percent ng kanilang operating expenses ay naging donasyon o donation po, nagkakahalaga ng thirty-three, uh, million pesos. Uh, ulitin ko lamang po, ito po ay basic due diligence at, uh, pag-aaral ng kanilang audited financial statements. Wala pong assumptions or wala pong ibang informasyon na ginamit, kung hindi ko ano 'yung nasubmit sa kanila sa Securities and Exchange Commission, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, sisimplihan ko lang. Ito mga patakaran na ito, na kailangan kumuha ka ng import license. Syempre, mag-i inward remittance ka, tama po ba 'yan?
Opo.
Wala namang silang pinakikita kung di, six hundred twenty-five thousand lang, tama po ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mr. Chairman.
Ay, 'yung sabi niyan, para makapagpasok ka ng madalaking, uh, talagang tambak-tambak na mga, na mga face mask o P P S mo sa kasakali. Talagang dapat pakita mo, saan ang galing 'yung perang pinambayad mo para makapag-import ka, tama po ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mr. Chairman.
So, kung wala sila maipakita, pwede bang pumasok na sa tinatawag natin? Nabibigla na ako, uh, are money laundering? Na pero, kung hindi na maipaliwanag, saan ang galing 'yung perang 'yan? Na pwedeng manggaling sa droga 'yan, tama ba 'yan?
Hindi ko po masasagot, Mr. Chairman.
That's not the question, I'm just speculating, biglang may pera eh. Ang pera mo, six hundred twenty-five thousand, magpapasok ka, makakapakuha ka ng negosyo na seven point two billion ang biglang sales mo. Nakakapagdonasyong ka, wala ka namang income na pinapakita ng ten million, nakakabili ka ng mga kotse na thirty million. Eh, sakaling 'yung perang 'yan, 'yan tatanungin mo na dapat ang ating mga, uh, gobyerno, di ba, ng B I R, ng customs. Tama ba 'yan sa nasabi ko?
O, tama po, Mr. Chairman. Uh, pagdating po dun sa komento niyo ng money laundering, alam ko po ang mga banko po, uh, uh, inaalam po nila kapag biglang may malaking, uh, amount na pumasok or intransact ang kahit sino, uh, kumpanya o depositors, Mr. Chairman.
Well, wait a minute, pero the point that I'm trying to say, kaya mo, kaya kita pinapaliwanag 'yan para makita kung bakit ginawa ng gobyerno ito, mga patakaran na ito. At times you have to have three years na import license bago ka makakuha, right? Kailangan pagkita, katung taon ka na nagni-negosyo. Ito, nagincorporate na September, by, uh, six months later, nakakuha na sila ng malalaking kontrata, tama ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mr. Chairman.
Para makuha nila 'yung kontrata 'yan, kailangan dinu-diligence siya, nilalaw, at saka nila liyong. Oh, saan ko kukulin 'yung pera mo, ang laki-laki ng kakaya mo ba 'yan? Di ba 'yan ang due diligence na dapat? Lawyer 'yan mga 'yan eh.
'Yun po ang due diligence, Mr. Chairman.
So, sa makati, talagang sa tingin mo, salat sa due diligence?
Uh, base po sa aking, uh, mga records or, uh, information na nakuha, uh, obvious po kasi 'yung mga dapat tinanong at kinlarify, Mr. Chairman.
Pero hindi tinanong. Kaya ngayon, nakabili sila, napahirapan pa 'yung mga Pilipino corporations na nagbabayad ng lahat ng buwis. Pag pumasok sa import license, napapahirapan, pero ito, sa isang kisap mata, kwarta na. Dahil nakakapag-import na sila kaagad ng napakalalaking halaga, na hindi pa maipaliwanag. Sa palagay mo, saan ang galing 'yung perang 'yan? Ikaw is CPA, saan ang galing 'yung perang 'yan? Di ba, makakapagkuha ka ng, pa'nsila eh, di ba? Dealer, di ba, lumalabas dealer?
Opo, wholesaler po, opo.
A wholesaler, kung wholesaler sila, dapat may pambili ka, dapat may letter of credit ka. Pagka-nagpunta ka sa banko, hahanap ka ng letter of credit, anong pambayad mo sa letter of credit, tama ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mr. Chairman.
So, sa makati, kung ikaw mahirap, hahanap ka lahat ng letter of credit, hahanap ka ng pera para makapag-import ka. Kung wala kang koneksyon, lalo kang patay, tama po ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mr. Chairman. Mahirap pong makakuha ng letter of credit, dapat po may pera ka sa banko.
Eh, yah, kung wala kang pera sa banko, ang tatanungin ko ngayon, may pera ba sa banko 'yan? 'Yan ang mahiwagan tanong, nasusunod, tama po ba 'yan?
Six hundred twenty-five thousand po.
Six hundred twenty-five thousand? So, hindi ako, na, 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 hindi ako natutuwa, na, nakukulat lang ako na, parang bang napakadali? Napakalakas nitong bagyo ito, na makakapasok, na walang pera, makakakuha ng kontrata. Tapos hindi pa tayo nakakasaguro, nagbayad sila ng mga sinasabi ng mga, uh, buwis, nakakapagbigay ng donasyong, kaliwatkanan. At, uh, tapos eh, itong mga abogado ng, uh, P S D B M, si Warren Liyong, excuse me, Mr. Warren Liyong. You're a CPA lawyer, certified public accountant and lawyer, 'yan na nakita ko sa'yo. Kaya ako medyo naasiwa eh, ah, ito si Lau. Lawyer, ah, lawyer, nagturo pa sa ate na 'yo de Davao. Eh, naku, de ate na 'yo ko eh, pare-pareho sistema namin eh. Napang wala ng, uh, mabilis masyado, pero tanungin ko kayo ngayon, sa tingin mo ba dapat pinayagan 'yan? Kunag, kunagawa ng due diligence 'yan, kahit na nagmamadali pa tayo, kahit na talagang nagkakamatay na tayo. Papapasukin mo lahat kaagad 'yan, ang seven point five billion, kamang ganon, unti-unti kunyari, fifty-four, sa fifty-four million pesos ba? Nag-ino, ang kanilang hinihita ng una, 'yan na lumalabas sa aming, uh, pagsusuri. Ang kanilang unang kontrata, fifty-four million, dapat ba sinuri na 'yung kanilang kakayahan?
Dapat po, Mr. Chairman, kasi sa importers license pa lamang po, ang financial capacity at, uh, bank statement ay required po. Base po sa kanilang, uh, website, Mr. Chairman.
Now, kung fifty-four million pala, palpak na, tapos na sumunod later on, mga bilyon-bilyon na, di ba? Papakita ko sa'yo eh, mga kanilang, uh, importation, di ba, 'yan, oh. Ang una kanilang kontrata, surgical mask, nakakahalaga ng fifty-four million. Uh, si Lau ang use at 'yan, ah, 'yung course, April sixteen, surgical mask, five hundred thousand quantities, thirteen point eighty-six million. Kakikita ba nila 'yan? Oh, 'yung April twenty, surgical mask, ten million. Oh, lumabas two hundred twenty million, di ba? Oh, tapos nagimport sila ng seventy-five thousand, six hundred million, umabot na sila ng eight hundred eighty-seven point eighty-six million. Tuloy-tuloy 'yan hanggang umabot ng, hanggang sa iba ba, nagimport na naman, six hundred eighty-eight million, umabot na ng one point five billion. 'Yung April twenty-three twenty, umabot na sila ng one point eight hundred seventy-five billion na suma total. At pagkatapos, hanggang May eight, umabot na sila ng five point six billion. Panayin supply nila, supply na supply, wala nagtataas ang kilay, wala nagsasalamin para makita nila 'yung kanilang sinasabi. At dapat, makita kung kanilang working capital ay sapat sa kanilang first contract. Six point twenty-four, six hundred twenty-four thousand, ang kanilang unang kontrata, wala man lang kung nakalusot dun sa six hundred twenty-four thousand. Paano naman nakalusot dun sa fifty-four million? Paano nakalusot dun sa mga kontrata na ang pagkalalaki na? Eh, talagang babaya, o may kooperasyon ang government authorities. Will it be unfair for me to conclude that or for the Senate Board of Committee to conclude that? Sir?
Uh, pwede niyo pong itanong sa kanilang, Mr. Chairman.
Well, ang kinakausap ko kayo, at kinakausap ko ang taong bayan. Ang taong bayan, dapat nakiginig, kung paano talaga, biglang yumaman dito sa ating bansa. Kung ikaw ay konektado, at kung ikaw ay talagang kapal mox, na hindi mo pa pansinin na naghihirap ang tao, ipapasok mo na ipapasok 'yung mga ganyan pera, at wala kang kinakatakunan sabagat. Hindi ka na-check ng customs, o kung hindi ka na-check ng B I R... Hindi ko alam, sinasabi ko lang 'yan, di pa ako dumarating doon, pero nakarating na okay Lau. At darilin 'yung sinabi niya kanina, hindi kailangan eh, meron kaming bayan niya Lau, doon ka nagtatago. Ang sagot ko diyan, kaya tayo may two envelope rule, technical at saka finances, tama ba 'yan? Titignan mo muna 'yan, tama po ba 'yan, sir?
Tama po, Mister Chairman.
Pagbumaksak ka doon sa finance, talo ka na, pagbumaksak ka sa technical, talo ka na, tama po ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mister Chairman.
Nasususpend eh, hindi nasususpend eh. 'Yung batas na 'yan, kahit na tayo ay nasa COVID pandemic, sapagat walang katipidipensa ang mga tao natin. Kaya ngayon, hirap na hirap tayong lahat. You're a certified public accountant, saan po ba galing ang pera ng gobyerno? Hindi po ba sa mga taxes, sa sintaxes, lalo na sa health, tama po ba 'yan?
Tama po, Mister Chairman.
So madakulit, tama lola, kahit na sino ka pa, dapat babantayan mo 'yung perang ibibigay sa'yo. Sapagat ang lumalabas dito, laway lang ang kapital. At pagkakaibigan lamang ang kapital, iikita ka na ng limpak-limpak. Kaya ako eh talagang nagugulat, gulat, nagugulat sa akin ng pangulo, nagugulat sa akin lahat sila. But at ang lakas nandating natin dito, hindi ako nagmamalinis po. Ang sinasabi ko lang po, hirap na hirap ang bayan, biglang kikita ng seven point five billion itong Singaporean na silong. Asi, itong si Lau, 'yung kanyang tatay nga nawawala ngayon, hindi niya makita, tinanong ko siya ng isang araw, na saan tatay mo? Hindi niya makita ang tatay niya. At hindi man lang nagtanong, tama po ba na dapat tanungin? Isang pindot lang makikita mo 'yung Farmally sa Taiwan? Papayagan niyo po ba kung kayo nakaupo, CPA lawyer kayo, katulad kayo na ni Attorney Liyong? Tama po ba na papayagan niyo, nakita niyo, merong stock manipulation, may warrant of arrest, papayagan niyo?
Mister Chairman, hindi po ako abugado, CPA po.
Oh, di ba CPA ka?
Opo.
Kahit na hindi ka abugado, kahit na hindi ka CPA, pag nakita mo, ang laki-laki ng kontrata ang ibibigay mo sa kanila. Tama po bang ibigay mo pa rin sa kanila, kahit na nakita mo na na sila ay may warrant of arrest? I'm sorry, I'm leaving it on you, you don't have to answer. Kasagutan 'yung mga tao nanonood, nakiginig. Thank you, sir.
Salamat ni Sir Chairman.
Ah, Senator Abinav, I'm sorry, Senator Abinav, I just want to lay the overview. Para maintindihan natin lahat, where we're going, thank you very much.
Mister Chairman, thank you very much, and just to ah, join you, Mister Chairman. Nakakadismaya po, and thank God we have a Sermon Abrea here to ah, to ah crystallize itong ating mga pinagtutuunan ng pansin. And again, we are not picking on any particular company, not even Farmally. Ang gusto lang natin ipaabot sa lahat ng kumpanya na gustong magsamantala sa kaban ng bayan, eh meron po tayong mga sistema na supposed to be, gaya ng sabi ni Sir Mon, may mga basic, these are basic things that you need to check. At ta- kitang-kita ko, may mga red flags pero wala hong nangyari, no? Ah, we are here again, dahil gusto nating bantayan ang ating mga sistema. One last point na I would like to ah, to, to ask Mister Chairman. 'Yung process po, na you've been talking about the process, the system, how we would be able to improve. To look at PSDBM, gusto ko lang tanungin 'yung PSDBM, whether 'yung current or 'yung dati, si ah dating 'yung si Lau, no? At tinitingnan ko po ito, 'yung ano po ba 'yung process of inventory management of PSDBM? I wanted to find out which division is in charge of the delivery of procured items?
Mister Chairman, if I may be, please be allowed to comment?
Please, please, sir.
Ah, the, for the delivered items, Mister Chairman, it's under the operations group. Once we receive the procured items, common use supplies and equipment, we store it at our warehouse, Mister Chairman. And if there is a demand from our regional depots, we ship it to the regional depots. As to the DOH requirement, we deliver it directly to the DOH warehouse po.
Okay, thank you, sir. Gusto ko lang tingnan niyo po itong table na ito. 'Yung what, what's DB, PSDBM's explanation for the unavailability of an average of at least thirty-one percent eh, thirty-one percent of its stocks of common use supplies? Binanggit na natin for so many hearings, ano ba 'yung common use supplies? Ito thirty-one percent, no? Ah, kung titignan niyo po 'yan, 'yan, 'yung dyan 'yung monthly na, na, na nakalagay, ito 'yung mga stocks, et cetera. Pero ang average po is thirty-one percent. There are three hundred eight items listed as common use supplies and equipment on the PSDBM website. Pero an average of at least ninety-six, ninety-six of the total three hundred eight items were not available per month. Hindi mo ba parang, ito 'yung dapat na ginagawa ako ng PSDBM, supposed to be, di ba? Para mag- mag- magbumili, ito 'yung ah, inyong mandato, bumili ng mas murang halaga para makatipid ang gobyerno dahil bulk 'yung bibili ninyo. Pero kung thirty-one percent hindi naman available itong mga common stocks, parang ano 'yung ginagawa natin?
Ah Mister Chairman, that is actually what we are addressing. Ah, it can, it cannot be denied that there are out of stocks in twenty twenty. Ah, the pandemic really did have an effect on our operations, considering the lockdowns imposed and the logistical issues attending our deliveries to the regional offices.
You don't deny this data, this, this particular data, that thirty-one percent, one-third, Mister Chairman, one-third of its common use supplies are unavailable. Hindi mo ba, if that's what you, ah, may guess to be?
Ah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, ah.
My, my question is, you don't deny these figures?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you for that, Mister Chairman. Let me end by asking ah, ah our Chair of the Commission on Audit, ah Chairman Aguinaldo, who I respect so much, ah Mister Chairman. Ang dami na ako, nagdaan itong mga hearings natin, no? Palimba na po ito, nakita natin of PSDBM, how they're doing their job, one-third of its common use supplies are unavailable. Ala, rinig na natin, Mister Chairman, 'yung pagta-transfer ng funds para makaiwas doon sa, ah para hindi bumalik sa treasury, ipapart doon sa DBM, at bahala na kayo, kayo na 'yung bumili para obligated na. At ah, yun na 'yung naging nakagawian, and Senator Dillon even mentioned, the PITC, ganun din po, no? Ah, patlo, 'yung supposed to be na savings, hindi natin napikita dahil mas mahal pa nga 'yung supplies na nabili ng DBM nung ah ibinebenta na. And lumabas din po 'yan, last hearing. So ang tanong ko lang po sa ating co-chair, ah Chairman Aguinaldo, epektibo pa ho ba itong PSDBM para gawin itong mandato nila? Baka dapat eh, i-abolish na lang natin ito?
Ah, yes, Mister Chairman, ah, I don't know if I can speak for the commission when I say this, kasi medyo opinion na 'yung hinihinay niyo eh. Although personally, ah, from what I've seen, parang I, I would join the um, I think there are several bills that have been filed seeking the abolition of PITC and PSDBM. I think it's, it's high time that we look at how we procure. Um, one of the criticisms of Republic Act ninety-one eighty-four is, is that it's too focused on accountability at the expense of efficiency. So maganda siguro make accounting balance, no? Um, you know, balancing efficiency with accountability. So I, I would support um, the, the, the measures that have been filed. And I would be very willing to provide some suggestions on ah, changing the nature by which we procure um, common use supplies in particular, ah, to make it less perhaps susceptible to, you know, um, any kind of alleged corruption or, or the like. So yun lang po, um, and I, I, again, I support the bill and I would be very willing to provide some input ah for the consideration of the honorable Senate, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, ah Chairman Aguinaldo, I think it's loud and clear. Kung hindi natin nakikita na ginagampanan ng ating mga ahensya ng pamahalaan, gaya ng PSDBM, nabanggit niyo rin 'yung PITC. Eh abolish na lang po natin to, and I mean full support of that, eh if that's the case. Nakikita ho natin dito, parang tinatanong, dapat tanong natin ulit sa kanila, what are we here for? Kung, kung ano 'yung dahilan, bakit nandito tayo? Nandito tayo para bantayan ang kaban ng bayan, kung hindi natin ito nagagawa, hindi nakakatipid ang ating mga ahensya, hindi nakakatulong ito sa ating mga ahensya, then we might as well abolish this. So maraming salamat, Mister Chairman, for your patience, dear colleagues, I know a lot of my colleagues would ask questions. Maraming salamat sa ating mga resource persons, ah, thank you very much, Mister Chairman, God bless.
Thank you very much, with the permission of ah, the, ah, our colleagues, I just want to ask ah, para tuloy-tuloy ang trend of thought, if I may. Ah, let me ask ah, as sinasabi ko lang, tama pala ang ginawa ng COA na talagang masita sila. Now, ah, may I ask Mister Wang, because of all these statements made by our resource person, Mister Wang? Mister Wang?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
It's just been established that you are the importer, correct?
Yes, we are the, the business functions of Family Forest Co. in distribution.
But your documents should be able to support that business. And it seems that your documents does not support that you have that capability, only a six hundred twenty-five thousand. Otherwise, you cannot import. Um, explain that?
Yes, Mister Chairman, um, during the pandemic, I think what really determined the, is determine the factor is the access to the supplies. Access to um, tangible um, negotiations with suppliers so that we can get the supplies first. Is, ah, we do not disagree that the company at that point in time does not have a lot of assets. But the, for example, when we refer to the masks that we delivered in the month of April, all these supplies, we were able to source it from distributors and suppliers. And we deliver it first to PSDBM before any payments will meet to us, that is all I can say.
You're telling us that you are the principal act, you have the principal access connectivity, that you can deliver all these goods, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mister Chairman, we, the.
It doesn't matter that the government should check where you got the money?
Um, Mister Chairman, I do not, I do not.
Are you saying the government to check where you got that money to import all that?
Mister Chairman, we will comply with all the documentary requirements.
No, you did not, you did not have any import license, import license is so questionable. All the other businesses also have access to their suppliers, even a Filipino firm was able to make ah, the masks. So if your only argument is access, you're the primary access, then let's forget everything. Ah, you're the only one that can provide, so we should have gotten everything from you, would that be correct?
No, Mister Chairman, I do not think the government cares everything for the company.
Somebody please, uh, be called?
Um, um, no, Mister Chairman, I respectfully disagree.
You have no other clients, right, in the Philippines?
We do have some private sales.
Oh, did it? How come you did not say that? Ah, what clients do you have?
Um, Mister Chairman, I don't, because of non-disclosure agreements, we cannot disclose.
No, I don't believe in that non-disclosure agreement when people are dying out there. When people are dying and are sick and they cannot work while you can work and while you can have all this money and enjoy your life. Shall I tell you the possibility? Were you not, were you not, ah, you're now, ah, your father, you said you cannot see, you cannot find, correct?
That's correct, Mister Chairman.
You've not gotten in touch with him, correct?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
And your father, ah, and you were in that meeting in Davao, is that correct?
Ah, yes, in the meeting, Davao in twenty seventeen March, yes, that's correct, Mister Chairman.
There's nothing without meeting, you were coming in and making a presentation so that you could do business in the Philippines, correct?
Ah, so that my father's company could do business in the Philippines, yes.
Unfortunately, when you bid it afterwards, we found out that your company has ah, ah cheated many Taiwanese stockholders and, and to show that the Taiwanese ah have already issued a warrant of arrest for you and your father.
Ah, Mister Chairman, may I first stay on record that I've never held or owned any single shares in that company. And I was only appointed to be the director of the company in June twenty seventeen to manage the Philippine operation.
So you were brought by that company in, all right, okay, I'll accept that for the moment. But let me ask you now.
Mister Chair?
Ah.
Yeah, sorry.
Senator, I mean, Senator, I mean, do you mind?
Yes, sorry.
Let me just finish, my, I don't wanna lose my frame of thought here.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Ah, it was just in reference to what you inquired about earlier. In the ITR, ah, there are some sales indicated to other companies. So they have other private clients such as Watsons, PH Pharma Care, GN Power, for approximately twenty-nine million of the declared sales, that's all.
What is your point?
Yes, my point being that there's a small amount ah, that they declared as sales to private companies. So it's not one hundred percent to government, that's all.
And that's late, they have not shown that so far, and you're the one saying it to us now, right? And that's a fact, they have not shown us that far, and he could have answered, all right? And he said that he had, and I said, I said I was willing to do that, but let me point this out. Maybe this is unfair, but fifty million dollars were lost in Taiwan. Now, ah, when you, how much is that in pesos?
Fifty million dollars is approximately two point five billion pesos.
Sorry, all right. People with shares of Farmally face an estimated one point five billion NT dollars or fifty point eight to one million dollars in losses. Having allegedly colluded with Chinese resister to falsify accounts and financial statements in one of the largest securities fraud in recent years involving a Taiwan stock exchange listed firm. You and other executives left Taiwan, face charges for alleged contraventions of the Securities and Exchange Act. Stock manipulation, fraud in financial statements, and illicit transfers. An international warrant for Wong Wen-Lai is valid for thirty-seven years. Now let me ask you a question, could that be have been the source of the money?
No, Mister Chairman.
Could be the source of your money here?
No, Mister Chairman, the amount of contribution I have to the company in terms of loans is approximately one point five million dollars.
I'm sorry?
The source of funds that are contributed by me is approximately one point five million dollars. I, I never declared to be very rich, as I've said. The company and its directors source for the supplies through our negotiations and from our communities for these supplies.
I, I cannot understand what you're saying, but did you have a letter of credit to be able to buy all these ah, supplies from Taiwan, ah, from China?
We did have, um, subsequently, we did have a letter of credit from a local bank in the Philippines for these supplies.
How much? At this point, ah, with the permission of the Senate, I'd like to ask a money laundering council, inspect all the bank transactions that may have occurred with this company so we will know the money trail. I saw directly, the, the Director General of the, with the permission of the Senate President, that the money laundering council be asked, find out whether there is a money trail ah, to be proven here. Ah, because there's so much billions of pesos that have occurred here. And we don't even have a money trail, where this money came from, saan ang galing 'yang perang 'yan? Ah, at bigla sila nakakapag- transact sa gobyerno ng wala silang pinapakitang kapital kundi 'yung six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, honest.
Ah.
Yes, so we will do the necessary, we will take the necessary steps, ah, Chairman, Senator Gordon.
Thank you, sir. On that note, I will let, I will only stop there muna, and I'll reserve it because I want to have the others follow the spoor, if you will. Ah, if that's your pressure, but ah, I think there are enough senators here that can follow the trap. And I'm glad Senator Laxson is next, Senator Laxson.
Uh, Mister Chairman, with the.
Senator, uh, Revilla is next ah, to answer, yes, go ahead, Senator.
Bon Revilla.
Yes. Go ahead, uh. Senator, with the permission of Senator Revilla, go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, just an addendum to what the Chair has, the Chairman has just stated ah, in relation to securing the. in relation to securing the documentation from the Anti-Money Laundering Council. May I just add, Mr. Chairman, that considering that the Philippines and Taiwan have an agreement on mutual legal assistance in criminal matters, could this representation, Mr. Chairman, also request that the committee subpoena the entry and exit information of Huang Wen Li and Huang Tsuyen from the Bureau of Immigration? Because, Mr. Chairman, there are reports that although Huang Wen Li was in the Philippines in 2017 to meet with the president, the last official record of his entry was dated 2005. So lastly, Mr. Chairman, that creates another mystery. Paano sa nakapasok sa bansa, para ba itong PPE na ginamit 'yung C130 ng ating armed forces? So I respectfully move, Mr. Chairman, for this subpoena of those entry and exit information of the Mr. Huang from the VI. I so move, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Bong.
The ladies asking, gentle ladies asking, if we can subpoena the immigration records?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, specifically the entry and exit information of Huang Wen Li and Huang Tsuyen. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And of course, the Anti-Money Laundering Council should be informed as well about the movement of money, which the Senate President has already agreed to, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So my motion is an addendum to what the chairman and the Senate President have stated. I so move, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With the permission of Senator, so ordered to the Director General, may we ask which bank? Mr. Wang, just one question. May we ask one, which bank you transacted with? You claim you opened a letter of credit allegedly with a local bank. Which local bank did you transact that with?
We had a credit line certificate from the Union Bank.
Union Bank?
Union Bank of the Philippines.
And when was that date?
November 27, 2020.
November 27?
2020.
20?
20.
20. Your transaction occurred in April 2020, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And may we know how much that letter of credit consisted?
500 million pesos.
And you got the letter of credit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll take your word for it for the moment. Let us bring, call the attention of the Anti-Money Laundering Council here, and the Director General is, should make that part of the request, to find out how that transaction was able to take place. In other words, from April to November, when you were already being paid, you now had the capacity because you were able to get paid by the Philippine government. In other words, you were already paid by the government, so now you have something to show to provide a letter of credit, to get a letter of credit. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
A letter of credit will not be issued unless you have the capacity to pay. Yes, or no?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, may I call on Senator Revilla? I'm sorry if I were dragging ankles here, but it's very hard to really follow the trail. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take off from the questions of our colleagues in the previous hearings, particularly the transfer of 42 billion from DOH to Procurement Service, Department of Budget and Management.
Yes, sir.
Sir?
For COVID-19 purchases. I'd just like to. Who's talking? Please turn off. Okay, I would just like to see the whole picture so we can appreciate the circumstances surrounding this matter. We hope to receive responses either from the DOH or PSDBM for the following questions. First of all, gusto ko po sanang itanong ang issue regarding face shields. So may we know from PSDBM either Attorney Wyan, DOHIC or PSDBM or former DBM Yuseklo, Yuseklaw may answer? My first question is, tama po ba na ang face shield I considered as common use supply and equipment, falling under the category of personal protective equipment for utility staff as contained in Annex B of GPPB Resolution Number 032020, dated 9 of March 2020? Tama po ba? Yes, Attorney Wyan? Or Yuseklaw may answer?
Mr. Chairman.
Sino to? Please state your name, please.
Attorney Wyan po, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Attorney Wyan. Is this correct?
Our interpretation is that facial forms part of the personal protective equipment po, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Kailan po 'yung unang nagrequest ang DOH from PSDBM ng supply ng face shield?
Mr. Chairman, I would have to check our records first on that.
Yes, please.
But I believe that it was after the issuance of the GPPB Resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Ng mga panahon na yun, na March, April, May, ay may inilabas ba po ang suggested retail price or SRP para sa face shields ang DOH? Kung meron, kailan naglabas at magkano?
Based on my recollection, Mr. Chairman, there was no SRP for the face shield. There was, however, an SRP for the surgical mask. The SRP for the face shield came out on the later part of 2020 na po.
Okay. Anong later part? August, September, what?
If my memory serves me right, Mr. Chairman, it's around September po, kasi we had a public bidding last December setting the maximum price for a face shield at around 50 pesos po.
So magkano 'yung SRP?
Between, maximum of 50 pesos po, that's the ceiling price.
Okay. Did the Commission on Audit question the price at which bought you the face shields? Sinabi ba ng Kowa na overpriced ang inyong face shields?
No, Mr. Chairman. The AOM that we received was actually on the inventory issues.
Now, may I know from the DOH, Secretary Duque may answer? Dahil wala pa po kung kayong inilabas na SRP para sa face shields ng mga panahon na bumili, ang PSDBM from March, April, May, 2020. Ang idig po bang sabihin ito eh, kahit anong presyo, kahit ito ay 120 pa, acceptable po ba ito para sa inyo as long as they meet the specifications that you require? Secretary? Secretary Duque? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me, your honor? Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you. At that time, nung ang presyo ng PSDBM was, I think, 124 pesos, yun ay walang SRP na naestablish. But at that time, we were already badly in need of this protective, personal protective equipment for our healthcare workers. And we value the life of our healthcare workers, and we wanted to make sure that whatever protection these PPEs, loose PPEs such as the face shield can give, should be most welcome to our healthcare workers. But the SRP came out sometime in August 10, 2020, and the SRP had a floor price of 26 pesos and a ceiling of 50 pesos.
Acceptable po 'yung price na yun? Acceptable po?
At that time, yes, there was no SRP. We had no, we had no idea. What was important was the protection of our healthcare workers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dahil lang dito po tayo saosapin ng SRP, I would also like to further shed light on this matter. Bakit po nagissue ang DOH ng SRP para sa face mask and face shields? Ito po ba 'yung kaugnay sa mandato nila sa ilalim ng Republic Act Number 7581? Or the Price Act, kung saan ang DOH ang tinalagang implementing agency which has jurisdiction over basic necessity or prime commodity with reference to drugs?
Yung aming kasing pinamili, it wasn't meant for the public, no? Visually, sayo SRP, this is for the general public, no? To have an idea how much would be a reasonable price for a piece of personal protective equipment, no? So kami, talagang ang habol namin was for the protection of our healthcare workers, and during that time, it was very important to make sure that hindi sila matansikan ng mga laway o mga hininga na pwedeng dalang COVID-19 virus. So yun po, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, pagdating sa face mask at face shields, ang DOH ang magtatakda ng SRP at hindi ang DTI, tama po ba ito?
Kasama po ang DTI at saka ang DOH, alimawa doon sa face mask, 'yung surgical mask, ang, I think, kung ako nagkamali, bandang Marso, naglabas ng SRP jointly ang DTI with the DOH at 28 pesos, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, for, thank you, Mr. Secretary, for PSDBM. Does this SRP also serve as guide for PSDBM's procurement of face mask and face shields? PSDBM?
That would be correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, Mr. Chairman, I would like to connect this matter about SRP to the fund transfers and agency procurement requests, or APR, of DOH to PSDBM in relation to the procurement and face mask and face shields dahil medyo naguluan po ako sa discussion last hearing at gusto ko lang po bigyan linaw ito. Now, Secretary Duque, nagtransfer po ng 42 billion pesos ang DOH sa PSDBM, yes or no?
Yes, your honor, but this was not a one-time transfer. Thank you, your honor.
Okay. Mula po sa 42 billion, nagprocure ang PSDBM ng face mask, yes or no? Yes, yes or no?
Yes, your honor.
Face shields?
Yes, your honor.
PPE sets?
Yes, your honor.
Noong nakapagprocure na ang PSDBM gamit ang pondong 42 billion, nadeliver po ba ng PSDBM ang face mask, face shields, PPE sets sa DOH?
Yes, your honor.
The supplies were all delivered. After the delivery, may binayaran po ba ang DOH sa PSDBM?
Wala pong binayaran dahil nauna na hong nakapagdeposit ng bayad. So nung dumating 'yung mga gamit, 'yung mga PPEs at mga iba pang mga gamit, ay din deliver sa Department of Health. At wala nang binayaran ang Department of Health dahil may nauna na deposit na binigay. Kaya ang sagot noon kung may binayaran pa pagkatapos ng delivery, wala na po.
So wala pong double payment dyan?
Wala po. In fact, Mr. Chairman, meron lang po akong kasulatan dito galing kay Kowa, Chairman Aginado, na binibigyan na liwanag 'yung pag-iisip ng iba na baka meron double billing or double payment. So ito po ay sinumite ng kagalanggalang na pagpapagulo ng Kowa, at ang sinasabi dito, kung mamarapatin ninyo, ay ang dalawang bagay. Una, para sa Department of Health, 'yung parehong common use and non-common use supplies and equipment using the 41.464 billion fund transferred from DOH, ito po ay galing doon sa appropriations under the Republic Act Number 11494, or better known as Bayanihan 1. Yung pakalawa namang for all government agencies through the PSDBM virtual store, meron po silang para tinatawag na tindahan na 'yung mga common use supplies na binili ng PSDBM gamit ang sarili po nilang revolving fund of the PSDBM. Ito namang mga supplies na ito ay available po ito na pwedeng bilhin ng ni noman government agencies, no? Kasama rin dito ang DOH, ano po siyempre. At batay po sa mga ulat o records, ang Department of Health purchased common use supplies from the PSDBM virtual store, gamit po rito ay hiwalay na budget. Ito po 'yung GAA 2020 funds, no? Para, A, before the deliveries of the supplies, 'yung malakihan mga bulto na mga PPEs na inorder namin. Hindi naman po kasi kaagad dumarating yun, no? Matagal bago makaratin, kaya kinakailangan namin mabigyan ng proteksyon 'yung aming mga healthcare workers. Bumili muna kami sa kanilang virtual stores, no? So, sa pakalawa, dito rin sa kasulatan ni Chairman Aginado sa Blue Ribbon Committee, ay pinapakita na even after the deliveries, ang DOH office or ang mga medical centers, ang ating po mga hospital, ay bumili din ng mga supplies mula sa PSDBM virtual store, kasi nga, hindi pa nila natatanggap 'yung kanila pong mga supplies. Yung lang po, marami salamat, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Mr. Secretary, please submit the Kowa letter to the committee.
Meron na po, Mr. Chairman. Pinatalo na daw po kanina, Mr. Chairman, ni Chairman Aginado. Salamat po.
Okay. After the transfer of 42 billion, meron po bang ibang transfer of funds ang DOH to PSDBM to procure medical supplies?
Alam ko rito, 'yung 41.464 billion, inclusive na lahat ng mga supplies. But subject to validation, titignan ko po, sisiguradiriin ko lang po, Mr. Chairman. We will give a report on this as well.
Okay. Now, sapat po ba 'yung supplies na nabili mula sa 42 billion? O kailangan po bang bumili pa ng karagdagan, Mr. Secretary?
At that point, ang alam ko po ay sapat na po, no? Pero siyempre, depende po 'yan sa gamit eh. Dahil kung maraming mga pasyente, at alam naman ninyo, magastos talaga sa PPE, ang ating po mga healthcare workers para po sa kanilang proteksyon, ay hindi po natin na kaagaran masasabi na ang binili natin, tama na ito. May projection po tayo. In fact, ang projection natin was 15 million PPE pieces for about 30 billion, thereabouts, no? So yun po, Mr. Chairman. So, yun po, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Kung sakasakali po, kailangan pa ng karagdagan ng uh, DOH o ng ating mga regional hospitals, saan po kinukuha o kinukuha 'yung mga pondo at pabili nila sa karagdagan face mask, face shields, o PPE sets?
Ah, gaya po ng uh, nakapaloon dito sa sulat ng uh, ating butihin Chairman, ay meron pong GAA source, funding source ang mga hospital, ang uh, mga regional offices. At 'yung po ang ginagamit nila, in fact, uh, ito pong pinag-usapin ng uh, face shield and face mask. Ang ginamit po rito pambayad sa PSDBM virtual store ay 'yung kanilang uh, uh, DPCB, Disease Prevention Control Bureau para po sa uh, central office and uh, regions. At mga hospital, may sarili namang po silang funding source. Salamat po, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Secretary. May we know from uh, PSDBM Attorney Wyon? Kapag nag-transfer po ng uh, pondo sa inyo ang DOH, uh, ito po ba ay may kasamang uh, APR, ang uh, agency procurement request na nagsasaad? Kung uh, ano-ano ang kailangan bilhin ng pondong 'yun at kung ano-ano ang uh, specifications ng nasabing uh, produkto?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, that would be correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for every procurement request that DOH transmits to PSDBM, it contains the technical specifications of the items that it wants to buy from us. And the money that was uh, initially uh, transferred is considered as advance payment which is deductible for every procurement request that DOH sends to us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, kapag natapos na ninyo 'yung uh, ang uh, procurement process at na-deliver ng mga face mask, face shields, uh, PPE sets, uh, ibinibigay na po ba ninyo ang mga produkto sa DOH? Uh, kailangan pa po ba nilang uh, magbayad muli sa PSDBM based on the uh, based on the SRP that they issued kahit na nag-transfer na sila ng funds?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the funds are already with PSDBM. So, whatever item we procure for DOH that is uh, indicated in the agency procurement request, uh, we deduct it from the funds available. It may be lower than the price or the budget allocated by the DOH in the said APR, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sa makatwid, meron po bang double payment sa face mask at uh, face shields na binili ng DOH through its fund transfers to PSDBM?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there is no double payment.
So, no double payment. Were the items uh, delivered completely? Was the quality checked and accepted by DOH? Nasiguro ba maayos lahat 'yung mga PPEs na 'yan? Nadiniliver dyan? Kompletong po ba? Hangga' sa kahuli-huli ang numero?
Uh, it, that would be correct, Mr. Chairman. For every agency procurement request made by DOH, we always ensure that the quantity as indicated in the APR is all accounted for, the technical specifications are complied with. And before we issue to the DOH, the procurement service delivery receipt, it, it passes the acceptance. It has to be accepted first, Mr. Chairman, by the DOH.
Okay. Related to, to the classification of face mask and face shields as common use supplies and uh, equipment and the procurement of these items by the PSDBM, uh, did you procure face mask and face shields apart from, uh, apart from and uh, outside the order of the DOH or apart from uh, those bought using uh, the forty-two billion? Bumili po ba kayo para magkaroon kayo ng stocks para sa inyong store na ngayon ay online na?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We actually have PS stocks uh, for surgical mask and some of the items uh, as classified under common use supply and equipment by virtue of the GPPB resolution issued last March twenty-twenty po.
Okay, ang ibig sabihin ba nito ay maari ng bumili sa inyo ang mga ahensya ng gobyerno at mga hospital ng face mask at face shields katulad ng pagbili ninyo ng uh, office supplies?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It is available to all agencies that need it.
Sinusunod pa po ba ninyo ang SRP na ini-issue ng uh, DOH para sa pagsusupply ng face mask at face shields sa mga government agencies at uh, hospitals?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Required po ba kayong uh, magsagawa ng uh, market scan para sa mga produkto ng ito?
That is the preliminary activity before we procure, Mr. Chairman. We check the price in the market po, Mr. Chairman.
So, did you actually conduct market scan? Ano po ang resulta nito?
Uh, based on the market scan, we, we base our procurement on the lowest price available. And when we set it for procurement, uh, for a bidding, that would be the ceiling that would be advertised for bid. So...
With the permission, just a quick interjection. One quick question, with the permission of Senator Revilla?
Go ahead, go ahead, Senator Pangalina.
Yes, uh, uh...
Senator Pangalina, may sir, good night.
Ay, 'yung suggested retail price na binibigay ng um, GPPB memo. Just to clarify, the purchases or importation made or, or the contracts entered into by DBMPS is not retail, diba? Pag mo ibili kayo ng pre, ng ano, ng face mask na twenty-plus pesos o face shield na one hundred twenty-two pesos, wholesale 'yun, diba?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can you please re- repeat the question? Sorry, I was not able to...
Um, sinasabi nyo na, y- y- just to clarify, no? 'Yung SRP iba 'yun sa preso na binibili ninyong wholesale, diba? Iba 'yun, no? Uh, pag ang SRP is twenty-eight, diba? Uh, tapos ang inyong wholesale price na binili ang isang uh, mula sa supplier is twenty-eight, hindi ibig sabihin parehong preso 'yun, kasi mas mataas talaga ang retail kaysa sa wholesale. Just, just placing that on record, diba? Wholesale is, should be cheaper than retail. Just for the record.
Mr. Chairman, uh, whenever we conduct procurement, we check the prevailing SRP. So, we set it, we set it as a limit.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, no, but my point is SRP is retail. Tingi! Diba? You buy in bulk wholesale, diba?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Diba? So, that, but pag wholesale, I mean, in, in, in the ordinary course of business, wholesale is much, much cheaper than retail. Just, just placing that on record, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um... Other than Farmali, did uh, PSDBM also procure surgical mask at twenty-seven pesos per piece from other suppliers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, but it wa, it is not the same at, at that price. Uh...
Is it lower or higher?
There were lower prices offered by some companies on different dates. Uh, the date actually is uh, crucial uh, in this uh...
I clarify mo 'yung date para maintindihan ng tao, no?
At that time, the Farmali was uh, able to get the contract, the SRP was, uh, the ceiling price at that time was twenty-eight. Now, subsequent to the initial procurement of PS, the prices uh, varied depending on the availability of the supply and the quantity po.
Okay, now to uh, tie up all my questions concerning uh, the issues of uh, overpricing, double payment, and transfer of funds, isang uh, katanungan lamang po para sa COA Chairman Aginaldo. Uh, you said during the last hearing that your uh, audit observations on PSDBM weld on the weak control over inventories. You have uh, also heard answers and uh, statements of uh, DOH, uh, PSDBM. And of course, when COA audited PSDBM or DOH on their transactions concerning the procurement of uh, face mask, face shields, PPE sets, uh, tinignan at binusi-sinyo lahat ang mga dokumento patungkol dito. Now, may I know, uh, Chairman Aginaldo, uh, are there uh, findings of uh, overprice and uh, double uh, payment? Uh, at may anomalia po ba sa mga pagkakabigay ng kontrata sa Farmali? Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, the findings of the auditing of PSDBM focused really on the inventory management of uh, supplies, uh, at least specifically, no? 'Yung sa COVID-related supplies. Uh, wala po silang findings on overpricing. Uh, if you look at the mask po kasi, I think 'yung DTI price at that time, and we're looking at March twenty-twenty, was about twenty-eight pesos, no? Yun 'yung ano, and um, based dun sa records kasi ng PSDBM, mukhang 'yung 'yung uh, price at which they purchased from the different suppliers, including Farmali, no? Was between, I think thirteen fifty and twenty-seven. So, from the point of view ng auditor, sabi niya, well, it's below namang the suggested retail price. Kaya siguro hindi na sila nagfinding on overprice. Now, in terms of the face shields, it was difficult kasi nga, I think si Secretary mentioned earlier, wala kasing SRP 'yung face shields. And so, medyo mahirap gumawa ng uh, pricing ng face shields, no? Kasi wala silang source na makuha. And I think they may have had problems also in the pricing of the PPEs. Hindi nila alam uh, how to find, you know, a retail price for that. Kasi hindi namang talaga 'yan ni-retail 'yan, eh. Uh, it's usually specific for the hospitals. In terms of the Farmali, um, bid, although pinapatignan po natin sa auditor 'yan, uh, ang importante from the COA point of view though is really whether the funds were actually disbursed and the goods were actually delivered and inspected at ginamit po. So, insofar as our job which is settling accounts, um, mukhang wala namang silang nakitang anomalia dun sa aspect na 'yun, no? Kasi the money was disbursed at saka na-deliver naman. Now, whether Farmali should have been given the contract or not, uh, it's really more, uh, I think, an ombudsman issue rather than a COA issue. Kasi nga, at the end of the day, nasetal 'yung account eh, na-deliver at binayaran. And wala mang nakitang um, defects dun sa goods that were purchased. Um, yun lang po, siguro linawan ko lang, kasi nga, ang mandato po ng Commission on Audit is really limited to settling, auditing, examining, and settling accounts. Uh, pagdating po sa issues of corruption, while we can help uh, provide uh, data and evidence and leads to corruption, kami mismo, uh, we do not have demanded to probe corruption, which is why we have to work with other government agencies when it comes to probing corruption such as the Ombudsman or the uh, Department of Justice. Yun lang po.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Just my last question. Thank you, uh, Chairman Gordon.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dick, Mr. Senator Gordon, can I just ask one question in relation to that?
Yes, 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 please, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Aginaldo, eh, are, did, did, was COA able to examine whether purchases of face mask and face shields were made by the regional hospitals and by the DOH-run hospitals or by any government agency from uh, from, from, from PSDBM? In other words, there was a SRP, uh, suggested retail price. The assumption is that it was for sale as part of their inventory. Now, has COA uh, examined these documents? Whether in fact, sales took place uh, within the uh, uh, within the suggested retail price?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, during the last hearing, I think it was the Senate President who brought up the issue, no? Kasi nga, uh, he was referring to a, a statement I made during the budget hearings po sa House, that there were some hospitals that actually were procuring from the uh, regional warehouses of PSDBM. And I guess it created some confusion, kasi nga, bakit pa sila bibili? Eh, may, pinasa na silang forty-two billion sa PSDBM. So, I asked the auditors to please take a look at uh, this. Ang nangyari po is, uh, nung March twenty-twenty, uh, the GPPB had classified certain COVID-related supplies and equipment as um, uh, common use supplies. So, sooner after, siguro within a week lang or, or so, uh, PSDBM started procuring already some of these common use supplies using their own money. Meron silang revolving fund which they used to purchase.
How much was that, Mr. Chairman? How much uh, fund for PSDBM was used to purchase?
Ang, what, what, ang pinakita sa akin about three hundred fifty, uh, just a second, Mr. Chair. I think three hundred fifty... Three hundred fifty-five point eight million.
Okay, three hundred fifty-five point eight million. What was transferred from DOH to PSDBM was forty-two million to purchase these uh... Huh? Billion?
Forty-two billion, uh...
Forty-two billion?
Yes, sir.
Was transferred by uh, DOH to PSDBM?
That's correct, sir.
And um, there were also funds of PSDBM to the tune of about three hundred plus million that were port, that were used to purchase the supplies in early months?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, um, so, there, uh, how much was the total purchases of uh, DBM, of uh, PSDBM? How much were the total purchases for, for this uh, uh, medical supplies, face mask, face shields, which were considered as common use uh, supplies?
Uh, the total was as of December thirty-one, the... The total that they were able to, the total uh, value of the contracts they entered into was thirty-nine point zero-seven-six billion plus three hundred fifty-five point eighty-three million. So, in total, as of December thirty-one po.
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, uh, apart from the three hundred uh, and so million pesos which was square, which was used uh, for the purchase of these common use supplies, which came from the funds of PSDBM, thirty-nine billion or so came from the budget of DOH transferred to PSDBM. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Senator Revilla, are you still, uh, ask a question?
He's done.
I finished. I, I, I have other issues later.
I'm done, Mr. Chair. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the chair now calls Senator Laxon for your interplay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was supposed to raise first the issue on the grossly overpriced ambulance units with equipment that the DOH supplied to the LGUs. But so as not to deviate from the main issue at hand, I will direct my questions to Mr. Michael Young, if he's still around.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, um, can Senator Laxon be so kind enough to remove his shield? I can hardly hear from her.
I'm at my stop, so this is COVID-nineteen related mask.
Okay.
I'm in my uh, I'm in my office, uh, Mr. Chairman. So, with your indulgence, I'll just speak a little louder. Yeah, just for the record of this committee, Mister Michael Young, what is your place of residence?
Uh, residence is two side na, it's a different.
Well, two side, man, na, 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 si十九号.
Uh Mister, uh Chairman, uh Mister Yang said that his place of residence is nine, at Nineteen Nara.
Nineteen Nara Street, South Forbes. Uh, Makati City, is that correct?
That's correct, Mister Chairman.
That is the same place where the OSAA, our security unit, the Senate Security Unit, served the subpoena on Mister Yang, is that correct?
Um, si.
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Which the, I think the security guard uh denied.
就是说那个保安就是
哦，哦
Uh Mister Chairman, according to Mister Yang, uh because he has been out of the country for a period now, maybe the person uh thought that he may not be coming back, and that's why uh then how?
我已经半年没有来住
对对 So, so, so he thought that Mister, probably Mister Yang will no longer be coming back, so maybe he got, that's why he said, and then because he is an ordinary staff or employee, that's why he gave that response.
Okay, I, I think, uh at least that's clear, that, that, that is his place of residence. How long has he been staying in the Philippines?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the second question?
How long has he been staying in the Philippines? I'll remove my mask na nga.
Hehehe.
Sige, alright. How long?
我在菲律宾有二十二年了
Uh Mister Chairman, to answer your question, number one, uh yes, uh that is his place of residence. Number two, uh he has been in the Philippines for twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, okay. My next question is, when, how, and why did you become involved in uh with Farmali?
Uh Mister Chairman, Mister Yang said that uh he doesn't know and he has no relation to Farmali.
I would like to remind Mister Yang that he is under oath, uh Mister Interpreter.
Yeah, uh 他说呢你是，他要提醒你你在那个，有，发，那个有 Uh yes, Mister Chairman, uh Mister Yang is aware that he is under oath, and it is only through the news that he found out that uh of the existence of Farmali Pharmaceuticals.
So, he maintains that he has nothing to do, nothing to do at all with Farmali, is that correct?
Hmm.
Senator Laxon, just one moment. I just want to call the attention of the official interpreter of the Blue Ribbon, Miss Ling Ling Ponse. Uh Miss Ling Ling Ponse, please make sure that we're having, getting an accurate translation. Miss Ling Ling Ponse, are you there?
Yeah, here.
Sorry?
Uh, my video is on. Yeah, here.
Okay, are you giving us an accurate interpretation? Make sure that we're getting an accurate interpretation.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, Miss, um There's a barrier, Stella, go ahead. Thank you, okay. You may answer, Mister Yang.
Okay, uh Mister Chairman, what Mister Yang said is that initially, uh he doesn't know of the existence or the whereabouts or anything about Farmali Pharmaceuticals. Later on, uh they did approach him uh for some assistance.
So, it is not true that he has nothing to do, or he had nothing to do with Farmali?
Uh Mister Chairman, your question pertains to the corporation, uh corporation or on the operations, we just like to clarify on that part.
First, the corporation, Farmali Pharmaceuticals.
就是你有
Yeah.
没有，我没有
Okay, uh Mister Chairman, I would like to clarify that in terms of the regist, uh registration or setup of Farmali Corporation, uh Farmali Pharmaceuticals, Mister Yang has nothing to do with it.
Uh that is correct. But does he have anything to do with the operations of Farmali Pharmaceuticals at any point?
Mister Chairman, in terms of operations, uh Mister Yang has not been involved, or he has no idea.
Does he know Wang Chu Yan?
你认识黄祖燕
The Chairman of Farmali.
Uh during the twenty-seventeen, he met Mister Huang Chu Yan together with his father, and after that, uh they have no any communications.
Does he know a certain Lincoln Ong?
你认识一个Lincoln Yes, he know Mister Lincoln Ong, Mister Chairman.
How did he know Mister Lincoln Ong?
你怎么认识Lincoln Ong? Uh before, um Mister Yang host a relative of Mister Lincoln Ong, that's why he got to know him.
Did he have any business dealings with Mister Lincoln Ong? Whether in his personal capacity or in his capacity as one of the incorporators of Farmali Pharmaceuticals?
Mister Chairman, no.
No business dealings with Mister Lincoln Ong?
你有没有跟Lincoln Ong有任何 Uh Mister Chairman, can you just be more, uh sorry, can you just repeat the question?
Did he have any business dealings with Mister Lincoln Ong, whether in his personal capacity or as a stockholder or incorporated of uh Farmali Pharmaceuticals?
Okay, 你有没有跟林立，这个Lincoln任何的生意来往交易，就在这个Farmali Pharmaceuticals公司 Okay, uh Mister Chairman, uh Mister Yang would like to ask, uh in terms of what specific period you were pertaining to?
In the supply of PPEs, medical supplies like uh face masks, shields, et cetera, et cetera, in relation to the transaction uh uh dealings of Farmali with the PSDBM, to be more specific.
So, Mister Chair, just, just to clarify, your question is, if he has any dealing or anything to do with the transactions pertaining to PSDBM and Farmali Pharmaceuticals?
Yeah, PPEs
For PPEs?
Supply of PPEs
Supply of PPEs?
Physical masks, face shields, face masks.
Mister Chairman, uh Mister Yang would like to clarify to say that uh when Farmali did get their, their contracts, he has nothing to do with any of those contracts or awards. Okay, then eventually, uh Mister Lincoln did approach Mister Yang, uh and then he helped him, them, or Mister, he, Mister Yang, uh introduced uh friends to Mister Lincoln who could help them with their supplies.
That is correct. That's uh the point I, I was trying to uh point out, uh, Mister Chairman, that uh Mister Michael Yang was the one who acted as a go-between or middleman between Lincoln Ong or Farmali Pharmaceuticals and the suppliers from China, is that correct?
Uh so, Mister Chair, your, your question again, I, that Lincoln and
No, Mister Michael Yang acted as the middleman
Okay, 你
Between Farmali Pharmaceuticals through Mister Lincoln Ong and the Chinese suppliers of the medical supplies in relation to the uh procurement
你给他说，我就介绍他们自己讲
Uh Mister Chairman, Mister Yang said that he only introduced and let them discuss uh things on their own.
So, that was his only role? He introduces suppliers to Mister Lincoln Ong, and then he had nothing to do with the, with the supplies anymore?
Okay, so Mister Chairman, Mister Yang said that he only introduced them, and then they, they discuss things on their own.
And he stopped all his participation?
I'm sorry, come again, Mister Chairman.
And he stopped all his participation
然后你就
in the dealings between the Chinese suppliers of the medical supplies that I mentioned and Mister Lincoln Ong.
所以自从你就
He just left them on their own.
然后没有再参与吗？ Okay, Mister Chairman, Mister Yang said that he only introduced as to where or who they closed their dealings, uh he's not, uh he, he, he does not know, uh who or where did he actually purchase those stocks?
And he never guaranteed
你没有
uh with his Chinese suppliers, the credibility or the ability of Mister Lincoln Ong to pay them?
你没有担保过所以你说你只有帮他们介绍
对对，介绍
然后呢 嗯，okay, so Mister Yang only introduced, and then they negotiated on their own, and
厂家嘛，朋友
Yeah, and then probably he, the first initially introduced friends, introduced some other friends for them to negotiate all of their dealings.
How many suppliers did he introduce to Mister Ong?
你介绍了几个供应商呢？
You, 是一个嘛，是一个
Around four suppliers, Mister Chairman.
These are individuals or these are companies in China?
这是个人吗，或者是公，是公司 Okay, so he introduced uh friends, individuals, and then probably these people would have introduced some other friends or companies directly to them.
That's it, that's his participation, introduced and then left them alone.
对对，他们就去
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Is Mister Ong around, Mister Lincoln Ong?
Yes po, yes po, uh Mister Chairman. Yes, Lincoln, narinibu lahat 'yung sinabi ni Mister Yang. Maliwanag? Okay. Apo, apo. Anong masasabi mo doon sa kanya? Pahayag na ang role lang niya, inintroduska niya, doon sa apat na Chinese suppliers, wala na siyang kinalaman at all. Ikaw na lahat ang nakipagdeal, ikaw nakipagtransak, ikaw ang uh, uh nag-usap na lang kayo kung papaano susuplayan yung Farmali Pharmaceuticals na mga face masks, face shields, PPEs, and other items, is that correct?
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh totoo po yun na may pinapakilala po si Mister Michael Yang na mga suppliers at 'yung mga friends na tumulong para dito sa PPE project, totoo po yun?
Yun lang ang role niya, hindi na siya nakialam pagkatapos ka maipakilala sa mga suppliers.
Uh I'm not privy to their, uh what's their discussion eh, pero may pinapakilala talaga siya, kung ano 'yung discussion nila, di ko na alam.
Hindi nga, hindi maliwanag, ganun, okay. Ang sabi ni Mister Yang, ang role niya lang, ipinakilala sa'yo 'yung mga tao sa China nakakilala niya. Pagkatapos, wala na siya kinalaman, ikaw na lahat ang nakipagdeal doon sa mga suppliers, is that true?
Uh Mister Chair, uh nakikipag-usap talaga kami sa mga supplier na pinakilala niya, yes po?
Hindi, ang tinatanong ko, wala na ba siyang kinalaman? Umalis na siya, kayo na lang ang nagtuloy-tuloy nag-usap, at hindi na nakialam si Mister Yang?
Uh, di ko, well, paano po
Yung diretsong sagot lang, uh Mister Lincoln
Ah, sige po, ah, sige po, uh Mister Chairman, napuulit ng tanong niyo, parang may, maintindihan ko na maayos, at isagot ko na maayos
Ganito ang, ang flow, no? Sabi ni Mister Yang, ang papel lang niya, ipinakilala ka sa apat na suppliers from China.
Opo, opo.
At wala na siyang ginawang iba pa. Ikaw na lahat ang nagpatuloy, kung papaano makipagtransaksyon, kung papaano uh tumanggap ng supplies, at makipagdeal doon sa mga suppliers na sinasabi niya, ipinakilala lamang sa'yo.
Uh, in addition to that, uh Mister Chair, uh he also guarantees for us. Nagkaguarantee sila para sa amin, kasi uh uh totoo po 'yung uh, 'yung, 'yung analysis ni Mister, uh Mister Chairman na, na medyo challenging talaga pag, pagdering sa financial.
Anong klaseng guarantee? Ang uh ginaguarantahan niya na makakabayad ka?
Uh, yes po, yes po.
Uh, magkanong nailabas mo ng
Mister Lincoln, uh can you turn, take off your mask para maintindihan ka na may ganyan?
Uh, Mister Chair, uh positive po ako sa ano, sa uh COVID, tapos po uh may mga tao din po sa bahay, andito po ako sa sala.
Nag-iisa ka sa kwarto ngayon, nag-iisa ka sa kwarto?
Hindi po, hindi po, andi, nandito po ako sa sala namin, kasi nandito po 'yung mga computer at 'yung iPad
Kasama dyan?
May, meron po eh, may, may baby po ako at uh mga tao, and then this is medyo open space din, so
Sige, then speak a little louder, okay?
Opo, opo, yes, 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 Mister Chair, yes po.
Okay, Mister Ong
Sorry, Senator Laxon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Dahil sinabi mo na wala ng kinalaman si Mister Yang, kung hindi maggarantya, papaano mo binabayaran 'yung mga Chinese suppliers? LC, money transfer, or cash? Papaano mo binayaran sila? Kasi malaking halaga ito eh.
Yes po, Mister Chair, uh may mga portion na kami na nagdiretso nagbayad sa mga suppliers dahil meron po namang kami mga pondo sa amin, at siyempre, uh mga savings ng mga uh our uh incorporators, our partners, and then there are, there, there are uh certain items that uh we need, uh we, we don't have enough funds to, to settle, so Mister Michael Yang guarantees for us.
So, hindi totoo na pinakilala ka lang at tapos na? Tuloy-tuloy ang kanyang participation by way of continuously guaranteeing sa mga suppliers, nababayaran sila, parang utang.
Uh
Sabihin na natin na ready?
I think uh, medyo may na miss si interpreter kanina, uh na I think Mister Michael Yang also, also mentioned that uh he guaranteed for us.
No, guarantee meaning, salita lamang, laway lang na ito si Mister Ong, kaya kayong bayaran ito? Yun lang, ikaw lahat ang nagbayad, ang tanong ko sa'yo, how did you pay the suppliers? Money transfer, LC?
We, 'yung mga ibang supplier namin talaga nagta-transfer talaga kami, uh wala po naman pong LC nung time na yan, uh tapos may mga ibang supplier na hindi namin kaya, kaya ang bayaran, eh humingi na po kami ng tulong kay ano, Mister Michael Yang, which uh he guaranteed with the supplier na, pag nakatanggap po kami ng buy it from the government, and then that's the time we pay, we, we pay na lang.
There you go, so, medyo laway ang puhunan, hihintay muna kayo makasingil sa gobyerno, at hindi naman kayo makakasingil sa gobyerno kung hindi kayo nakapag-supply sa utang, at garantya na yung Mister At garantya ni Mister Yang, kaya kayo pinayagan ng suppliers na tuloy-tuloy ang pag-supply sa inyo sa pamamagitan ng garantya ni Mister Yang do sa mga Chinese suppliers.
Uh parang tama po kayo. San ganito po 'yung ganito, mali, ganito po 'yung logic.
Parang tama. Lingkon, ganito, no?
Yes po, yes.
Mahirap na makipagtransak ka sa napakalaking halaga ng walang involve na mga letters of credit, no? Yung cash, parang garantya lang ni Mister Yang, babayaran kayo niyan, pautanging kayo ng sabihin na nating daang milyon? O bilyon? Mas i-convert na ng uh RMB, malaking halaga yun. So tama na 'yung garantya ni Mister Yang, nababayaran kayo ni Mister Lingkon Ong, suplayan niyo yan, at sigurado makakasingil yan. Ganun ang ato-dision 'yung palabasin, di ba?
Uh Mister Mister Chairman, nung time na yun, uh actually, we're expecting the the project to be very quick eh. So yun po, humingi po talaga kami ng tulong kay Mister Michael Yang.
Hindi ko, parang ano eh, parang sa sa restore na o kaya, parang transaksiya na bilihan na sasakyan lang na o gagarantahan ko, babayaran ka nito, binigay na sa'yo sasakyan. Eh ito, bilyon ito eh. Ganun bang kadali yun? At saka government transaksyon, dapat kompletong 'yung inyong papeles, mga import permit. Siyempre, sa customs, mahigit, hingaan kayo ng mga letters of credit, eh di ba? Eh sabi mo, walang letters of credit, wala ka maipapakita na LC. Ang sabi mo, kung hindi cash eh garantya lang ni Mister Yang, eh dumarating 'yung supplies ninyo, eh bilyon ito. Ganun kadali?
Uh Mister Chairman, hindi po talaga madali nung mga nangyari nung panahon na yun.
Hindi, hindi talaga madali. Kaya alam mo, uh Lingkon, hindi nga kapanipiniwala eh ganun kadali ang transaksiya involving billions of pesos. Yun ang sinasabi ko. Na garantya lang ni Mister Yang, darating 'yung supply ninyo at sigurado na kayo makakasingil. Ngayon, papaano magagarrantahan ni Mister Yang na makakasingil kayo? Kaagad, para mabayaran 'yung mga sinusupply ng mga Chinese firms, 'yung apat na Chinese firms.
Mister Chair, uh I cannot answer for Mister Michael Yang.
Ayun nga, nagtutura na kayong dalawa ngayon. Sabi ni Mister Yang, ikaw ang diretong nakipagtransaksiya do sa mga Chinese firms, at siya lang ang nagpakilala. Ngayon, hindi ka privy sa pag-uusap ni Michael Yang do sa mga Chinese suppliers. Ang sinasabi naman ni Mister Yang, hindi siya privy sa pakikipag-usap mo sa mga Chinese suppliers. Now, which is the truth?
The truth is, uh Mister Chairman, that the truth is talaga, Mister Chairman, uh tumulong talaga po si si Mister Michael Yang. And then uh I I I think he's really connected and uh within in China. Tapos po uh meron namang po kaming nuwa nung time na yan. So I think uh it's also a good proof and boost of confidence to these suppliers.
Yeah, I know that, but this is a government transaction. Hindi ito 'yung bilihan. Nagkita kayo sa isang lugar, sa isang restaurant, pinakilala sa'yo 'yung supplier, at naniwala 'yung supplier. Sinuplayan ka ng kung ano man 'yung uh i-pinag uh pinag-uusapan 'yung bilihan. This involves billions of pesos. Sabi ko nga, hindi ganun kasi simple na isang garantya. Pagbibigyan ka ng suppliers. Ang sabi ni Mister Yang, hindi na siya, hindi niya naalam kung papaano kayo nag-usap ng suppliers. Ang sinasabi mo ngayon, hindi mo naalam kung papaano nakipag nakipag-usap si Mister Yang sa mga suppliers. Ang tanong ko, alin ang totoo sa dalawa?
Uh totoo po yun na pagdering sa negotiation ng mga delivery at pricing, uh kami na po talaga ni ni supplier nag uh nagka-finalize. Totoo po yun. At uh inaamin ko rin po na nagka napagdering sa mga bayaran. We need, we also need Mister Michael Yang's guarantee.
Parang paniwalaan niyang Lingkon, ano? Kasi napakalaking halaga nito, government transaction pa ito. Para isimplify niyo ng ganun ang inyong uh pakikipag-usap. So wala kayong LC?
Ano po? Uh LC po, wala po.
Wala, walang gamit na LC.
Wala po.
Money transfer. Money transfer.
Meron po, meron po, meron po, meron po.
How did you make the money transfer? Bank to bank?
Uh pag pagdering po do sa in our uh our internal operation, pagka nagre-remit po kami sa mga supplier. We uh we use uh Telx, 'yung 'yung maayos po na ano, na na transaksiya.
Do you have documents to show your uh proof of payment do sa mga suppliers?
Uh we we have all those those document, uh as long as uh uh it's uh wala naman pong rights or uh my evaluate sa amin, we are more than willing to cooperate.
Okay, how much in total did you pay the four suppliers? Do sa mga dumating, uh 'yung na na procure ninyo so as uh and 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 supplied to the PSTBM. Uh magkano 'yung binayaran niyo sa mga suppliers?
Sir, uh Mister Chairman, wala po kasi sa amin 'yung mga, sa akin po, uh wala po talaga sa akin ng record. I I think I have to access the our accounting records.
But ikaw nakipag-usap sa mga suppliers, may idea ka kung magkano 'yung presyo na binayaran mo doon, di ba?
Uh Mister Chairman, kasi it uh medyo ano po, medyo ano na po yun eh, uh trade secret na po yun eh, uh parang hindi po kaming komportable na i-ibulgar na na po sa publiko.
Uh just as an intervention, Mr. Laxson?
Go ahead, uh with the permission of Senator Laxson?
Yes, uh sir, these are public funds. These are subject to audit by the COA. And you better, and even if you do not testify, COA has the power to inquire. Pwede pong tanungin, tingnan ang records ng Pharmaly kung magkano binayad niyo sa inyong mga supplier. Lalo na po, kagaya na may testimony dito, na bukang lalo namang kayong pera. Paano niyo nairace 'yung seven billion na pong bayad ninyo? So pwede pong tingnan yan ng COA dahil transaksiya, dahil pera ng taong bayan yan. Uh pwede pong uh nasa nasa kapangirihan ng COA na tingnan. So sabihin mo na kung kung a-ano ang totoo, dahil pwede ma-check po yan.
Uh Mister Chair, thank you po do sa enlightenment. Uh uh definitely, makikipagcorporate kami sa mga sa mga ahensya. Pagdering sa mga ganitong uh investigation. Salamat po, Mister Chair.
Kaya nga, di sabihin mo na, makikipagcorporate, tinatanong ka na, hindi mo naman sinasagot.
Uh Mister Chair, uh I I myself alone can't at uh uh answer that question, kasi uh companion po kami. Uh allow allow us to uh uh have a meeting on it, tapos pag-usapan namin. We seek guidance with our accountants and lawyer, and then definitely, uh pagka kinakailangan namin makipagcorporate sa sa COA, uh gagawin po namin yun.
Okay, Mister Lingkon Ong, uh with the permission, Mister Chairman, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Puro verbal ba ang usapan niya? Did you have any uh document? Kung ano 'yung uh, meron kayong parang joint venture agreement with Mister Yang?
Uh we do have agreement po.
Yes, do you have a copy of the uh agreement?
Uh I I don't have it uh with me, Mister Chairman.
What kind of agreement do you have with Mister Yang?
Uh hindi ko po talaga maalala nung 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 mga specific content na yan, Mister Chairman. But uh uh sana po maintindihan niyo na kami po sa community namin, minsan uh totoo po yun, pagka minsan may mga transaksiya kami na minsan verbal-verbal talaga, uh bis negosyante lang po.
But in this particular case, 'yung supplies na mga PPEs, sinabi mo, meron kayong pinirmahan na agreement with Mister Yang. Ang tanong ko, anong klaseng agreement? Anong klase 'yung pinirmahan 'yung dokumento? Anong form? Is it a joint?
Mister Chair.
Agreement? Is it a contract?
Mister Chair. Uh.
Can you please wait for the question to be uh formulated before you answer?
My apologies, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, what document document did you have or did you sign with Mister Yang? Is so far as the supplies of the materials?
Mister Chairman, I'm not really uh privy or hindi ko talaga ma-recall ngayon kung ano 'yung content, but we have, we do have kasulatan po.
Uh very important document, hindi mo matanda kung anong form, joint venture ba, contract ba? Hindi mo malam maalala kung ano yun?
Um meron, meron, meron po talaga nun.
Anong klase nga?
Mister Chair, hindi ko po maka, di ako maka ano eh, di maka, kasi uh baka po uh mali 'yung mga masabi ko ngayon, tapos iba namang nakita ko.
Can you produce, can you produce that?
Hanapin ko po sir, yes po, yes po.
Mister Yang, sign that document, I suppose, correct? As well as you did sign the same document? I have a question. You haven't answered. Both Mister Yang and you signed that document which you said uh is in your possession, di ba? You cannot just recall kung ano 'yung pinirmahan niyo, but you did sign uh on the same piece of paper, on the same document?
Yes po, yes po.
Can you produce that and submit that to the committee?
Hanapin ko po, uh sir, hanapin ko po, and then definitely comply kami sa kung kung kailangan talaga.
So when you were dealing with the Chinese suppliers, you were traveling to China?
Ah hindi po, hindi po.
Or who was who was traveling to China to deal with them?
Uh Mister Chair, uh kasi nung time na yan, uh that was that was pandemic. Maraming mga bansa na mga mga borders mga sarado po.
Okay, so how did Mister Yang introduce you to the Chinese suppliers? They came here, you went there? By phone?
Puro, puro by phone lang po, Mister Chair, tapos uh may mga tao po namang kami sa China.
Telepono lang, pinawagan ka ni Mister Yang, pinakausap sa'yo 'yung Chinese supplier, all four of them. Maybe one after the other, and that's it?
Yes, uh yes, Mister Chair, yes po.
Okay, so meron ka bang nilabas na cash?
Dito po sa side namin, sa side po namin ng Pharmaly?
Sa Pharmaly, oh.
Uh yes po, yes po, yes po.
Magkano?
Estimate, how much cash did you, for the whole, for this whole transaction? How much cash did you shell out, whether it's advance payment, partial payment? How much?
Uh Mister Chair, I really have to refer it to uh to to our other partners for that, kasi I really don't have the record it with me now.
Sinong partners? Ang pwedeng sumagot. Nandiyan lahat 'yung partners mo eh.
Mister Mister Huang, uh do you think you can uh you can, you can access any any document? Mister Chair.
Who are you referring to? Mister Huang?
Mister Huang?
Okay, Mister Huang. Mister Huang.
Mister Huang, uh uh Mister Chair, uh baka pwedeng makahingi po ng opportunity na para mag makapag uh opening statement po si Mister Huang, Huang Suyan?
No, 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 I'm asking him a question and you you referred me to him. You referred the committee to Mister Huang, uh para sagutin 'yung tinatanong ko.
My apologies po.
How did you transact? With the or deal with the four Chinese suppliers? Kasi sabi mo, nirefer ka ni Mister Yang. So how did you go to China? Did they come here? Sabi mo, by telepono lang. Ngayon, ang sagot mo, si Mister Huang namang pwede sumagot nun, how? So I'm asking Mister Huang, and now you're saying mag-o-open statement si Mister Huang. Mister Huang?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
So how did you transact with the Chinese suppliers? The first time you were introduced by Mister Yang?
I mean, um to clarify one thing, I wish to stay on record that Mister Yang and I have not been been direct contact for for since twenty seventeen, March. After that, um after he introduced to for us to for the my previous employer to invest in the companies, um we stopped contacting each other. As for the question regarding the how do we contact with the Chinese suppliers? I think most of the communications were done through WeChat. They would send us samples, they would send us pictures. And um they would we'll relay to them our requirements of the amount. And then we will ask them for the supposed um delivery dates and quantities they can met to their schedule, so that we can better prepare for our um uh proposals.
So we're now back to Mister Ong. Because as you mentioned, after the March twenty seventeen encounter with Mister Yang in Dabao, you never had the chance to see him again or to talk to him again. So we're back to Mister Ong. Ang tanong, how did you deal with the Chinese suppliers? Did you go to China? Politically, naman, I hate to be repetitive, but you're not answering the questions directly.
Yes po, Mister Chairman.
Unresponsive.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I'm here, I'm here po. Uh sorry po, last na po talaga, uh 'yung ano po 'yung tanong niyo, isasagot ko talaga na maayos.
Ang sabi mo, pinakilala ka sa mga Chinese suppliers. Ang tanong ko, papaano kayo nagkita o nag-uusap nung Chinese suppliers? Apat yun. Oh, pumunta ka ba ng China? Sabi mo, hindi. Ang nirefer mo ko to Mister Huang. Sabi ni Mister Huang, hindi niya namang namimet si Mister Yang. Ikaw talaga 'yung kausap ni Mister Yang. Ayun ang tanong.
Tama po, tama po, tama po kayo. Yes po, Mister Chair. Mister Chairman pala.
Hindi tama, how eh?
Ay, uh Mister Chairman, nag-u-usap talaga kami ng mga Chinese supplier through WeChat. Yung app po na WeChat.
Billion-billion ang usapan niyo, WeChat lang kayo ng WeChat.
We were really not able to travel that time, Mister Chairman.
Mi- Mister Chairman, uh this is such a parliamentary inquiry. What is the status of the warrants of arrest issued against these uh people? Those who were issued the warrants of arrest, they still stand? Am I correct, Mister Chairman?
The warrant of arrest was based on contempt of not showing up. You can now issue another warrant for contempt for being evasive, and obviously, the witness is being evasive. And the chair will entertain an emotion to cite this gentleman in contempt for lying or evasiveness under the rules.
Yes, if I may uh move or uh uh issue the the motion, Mister Chairman, it's not only Mister Ong that's uh being evasive. I think Mister Yang likewise is being evasive, because we cannot get a clear answer. They're working for each other, and clearly, they're being evasive. So I would, you know, I move, I really would move uh either the either not to lift the warrant of arrest previously issued by the Senate President or issue a subsequent warrant of arrest for being evasive.
Well.
Against whom? Against whom?
Let me see.
Against Mister Yang.
Both Mister Yang and Mister Ong. That is a, that is a motion. Well, the chairman works your motion. Uh and uh the whole world will know that there is a pending warrant of arrest for Mister Yang and Mister Ong if the if the by the committee so pleases.
Second to motion, Mister Chair.
Alright. No objection. The chair hereby orders that Mister Lingkon Ong and Mister Yang are placed under arrest. There are reasons for it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mister uh Laxson. Mister Yang was asked whether, when was the only time he did not readily say that he presented himself during the meeting in May seventeen, you had to pry it out from him. On the other hand, this guy says, and he says that he never had any. Wala silang pinag, wala, nawala, wala silang dealing directly, sabi ni Mister Yang sa Pharmaly. And yet ngayon, sinasabi ni Mister Ong na nagagarantya si Mister Ong. In fact, if I may add, sir, with your permission, Mister Laxson. Ay to sinabi po ng presidente, ano bang reklamo ninyo? Kasi si Michael Yang daw, eh negosyente, negosyante ito. Adre, hindi naman ito sabihin mo na nagtatapon ito ng pera. May contact ito sa China na malalaking korporasyon, at siya ang nagpagador. In other words, uh siya ang gumagaran siya talaga ng ng bayad, or siya ang magbabayad sa sa made their entry here. So yun ang sinabi ng presidente. Which uh uh again, quote unquote, which uh uh supports the statement made by uh Mister Ong na ginagarantahan ni Mister Yang. So hindi totoo na wala siyang transaksiya, ginagarantahan niya lahat 'yung ino-order nila. At uh dahil dyan, uh dapat uh nakita, talagang may relasyon talaga si Mister Yang sa Pharmaly. At uh uh ang masasabi ko lang, uh ah, dapat, tanong ngayon pa natin si Mister Ong, para masarado na 'yung ah, kanyang statement na makikita talaga na nagsisinuwaling siya. And ah, go ahead Mister Laxon, you can go ahead, this is your, ah, this is your time to ask them.
Yes, Mister Chairman, thank you. Ang sunod na tanong ko, dahil sinabi nila, binabayaran nila ng money transfer or cash 'yung suppliers. So saan kayo bumibili ng foreign exchange? Kasi hindi naman niyo pwedeng bayaran ng pesos, di ba? So how do you do it? Where do you buy your foreign exchange? In this case, renminbi. How did you secure the foreign currency to pay your suppliers?
Ah, proper, proper bang transaksiyon po yun Mister Chairman? Hindi po siya renminbi Mister Chairman. US dollar po Mister Chairman.
Renminbi, ang tinatanong sa'yo, siya kaka-kumukuha ng foreign exchange para bayaran 'yung mga tao doon. Siyempre, magre-remit ka, magre-remit ka eh, di ba? Sa'ko'y kumukuha ng pera bang bayad doon?
Pag dito po sa, pag dito po sa Philippine side, ah, we, we transact with our bank.
Sinong bank?
Union Bank.
At kailan, kailan kayo unang nagtransact?
Ah, we, we have to check the, the, the record, pero continuous naman 'yung transaksiyon.
Sinabi nga ni Huang na ang unang transaksiyon niya sa Union Bank ay November. Dati sa full seven months. Pitong buwan, magbula nung nakakuha kayo ng malalaking kontrata na sunod-sunod na linggo sa, nung Abril. Ang sa record dyan, binasa ko na kaya na. So it took you seven months bago kayo magsanta, ang hiniram niyo doon, five hundred million. Sa makatwid, nagbabayay kayo between that time ng pera. Sa'ko lang kayo umutang, nung nagkaroon na kayo ng pera, kuno, kuno ah, kuno. Di ako naniniwala, dahil ang tingin ko nagbabayay kayo, pero hindi niyo masabi kung saan 'yung kinukuha 'yung pera. Galing ba 'yan sa ibang sources na ilisit?
Ah, hindi po Mister Chair, ah, meron po kaming mga sariling pondo rin, at ah.
Bigla may sariling pondo na naman, oh sige.
Opo.
Specifically, Senator Gordon, kaginong pera, bank accounts, kung saan ang galing 'yung nire-remit niyo sa mga supplier?
Ah, if ever kung, if ever magre-remit kami sa mga supplier, dapat po talaga manggagaling sa ano namin, sa bank account namin, kasi.
Kaya nga, so, aling bank, sino ang may arin nitong mga bank accounts? At magkano ang nire-remit niyo?
Ah, corporation po namin, 'yung Farmali Pharmaceutical po.
'Yung korporasyon niyo Mister Ong, ang pera is six hundred twenty-five thousand lang.
Pesos?
Kunu man, oh peso, six hundred twenty-one thousand pesos lang. Kaya hindi pwede bang gagaling sa korporasyon ninyo? Kung million-million, ang binabayad niyo sa Chinese suppliers, sabi mo galing sa bangko, tanong ngayon, sino ba may arin ng mga account pa?
Ah, corporate account po Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman, talaga nagsisinuwaling ito eh.
Ay, talaga?
How can it be a corporate account? With the account, where, yeah, yes, sir, sorry Senator.
Senator Laxon, I've. Established very clearly na ang pera ninyo, six hundred twenty-five pesos. Ang tanong ni Senator. Six hundred twenty-five thousand pesos, ang tanong ni Senator Delon, six hundred twenty-five thousand pesos, tapos ang nire-remit ninyo, sabi mo galing din sa korporasyon ninyo, sa Farmali, maliwanag dyan, hindi sa ibang korporasyon, hindi kayo nangutang at lahat. San ang galing 'yung perang nire-remit niyo sa China? Sabihin na natin galing sa bangko rito. Ang sagot, galing sa korporasyon niyo. Eh, ang late nga ng, ng kapital ng korporasyon ninyo, six hundred twenty-five, that's the question. How do you reconcile that?
Okay, ah, Mister Chairman, can, pwede na po ba akong mag ano, mag, magpaliwanag?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you Mister, thank you Mister Chairman. Thank you Mister Chairman, ah, marami pong kasing series of transaksiyon yun, so, meron naman po kami naiipon na, na pera. So, so that's our pondo, and then at the same time, sa mga, sa mga series of transactions, pagka, pagka malayo malaki na po 'yung project, kinakailangan din po namin mangutang sa mga kaibigan. So hindi ko po dinindinay na may, meron kaming mga utang sa labas.
Kinuha niya ng problema eh, bilion-bilyon ang tinatransak niyo. Marami kayong kaibigan, kailangan paliwanag, kung saan rin kinuha ng mga kaibigan niyo 'yung pera yan? Mapaliwanag kayo sa Money Laundering Council?
Ah, definitely, we, we.
Sige, sige, sagutin mo.
Ay, definitely po ah, kinakailangan po namin makipagcorporate sa, um, Anti-Money Laundering.
Talaga magco-cooperate ka?
Tapos po ah.
Senator Dick.
Senator Delon, you have question?
Ah, Senator Dick, the first transaction of Farmali is fifty-four million.
Hmm.
Le, money that they had was six hundred twenty-five thousand. Alright, so, where did the fifty-three million come from? He said from bank accounts. Whose bank account? Because it cannot. Ano?
Corporate, corporate, ang sagot niya.
Corporate, how, corporate, 'yung korporasyon ang pera? Six hundred twenty-five thousand?
Mister Chairman, on, on the screen, ito 'yung timelines, ano? Eh, wag ko ko sasisingit dito 'yung nakasingit sila para gamitin, look, and I'd like to address these questions also to Mister Lau, ano? January two, you were appointed, and sabi mo nagapply ka. Where is your letter of application? Do you have a copy? To be appointed under secretary, ah, OIC PSDBM at the same time, executive director?
Um, it should be distinguished between the two, my statement is I applied as under secretary, which I was appointed to as under secretary in DBM. With respect to executive director, I never applied for it. It was already stated, ah, I think, last year and this year senate investigation that there was a vacuum when the executive director was removed from office by reason of lack of, um, ah, qualification.
Alam na natin yun, Attorney Lau, alam na natin yun, um, na-ten, ano?
After he was, after he was, she was removed from office, there was a vacuum. I was instructed to be OIC only. So the secretary of DBM was the one who executed the OIC, yun po.
Okay, alam na natin yan, never mind.
Yes sir.
February four, you wrote the Civil Service Commission requesting that, ah, reclassify 'yung mga employees, 'yung mga staff sa PSDBM as confidential employees, why did you do that?
When I took into office on January twenty twenty, I noticed that a lot of positions have been vacant by reason of high turnover rate. Ang turnover rate, mabilis po 'yung alisan dyan, kasi nga walang security of tenure. Second po, ah, when I, I took that position, nanoticed rin po that, ah, very few are interested in, in applying. So, ah, and thirdly po, when I checked it, there was a structured proposal by, um, a consultant of, of the previous executive director, Mr. Edmaqueval, that, ah, they have this proposed structure, kasi nga medyo problematic 'yung structure ng PSDBM. In fact, previous to me, ah, PSDBM was being moved to be either demolished or, ah, ah, I, when, tanggalin na sila sa operations, or they will be incorporated as a G O C C. So based on that, as part of my, of my professional work, I consulted the, ah, Civil Service Commission as to feasibility, whether or not these positions which are crucial can be, or may not be considered as confidential positions. It's a consultation, however, there was no response for an entire year. Lacking the response, we continued operating the PSDBM in a usual manner based on the existing structure.
Mister Attorney Lau, dahil walang security of tenure, kung te nag apply, ang solusyon mo gawing confidential employees, hindi mo ba alam na ang confidential employees, wala rin security of tenure?
No sir, that's, that's, that's part of it, kasi ka, ah, the, the purpose we wrote that letter, kasi nga meron mga concerns dyan, it's a point of inquiry. Hindi, we aguard if it can be, kasi nga, part of the, of the dilemma of the PSDBM status yun, kasi if you look at, no, that's a problem eh.
Ent, letan mo eh, naka-plaza board Attorney Lau. In spite of the agency status, it is also ah, vital for the agency head to ah, appoint officials and personnel with utmost trust and confidence that are capable of handling highly confidential deleg, delegations on top of the regular functions. Ano highly confidential procurement, 'yung usapan natin, it should be transparent?
Yes, um, be, whether or not they are confidential or not Mister Chairman, it will be transparent because everything is public record, and everything is on record. Even all the senators' office have confidential employees, but these are all transparent, kahit saan po tayo ganun. So these director positions and EA positions, um, as for a formal ED, it's a nature of employment that they can be hired or fired at any time by reason of confidence. Ah, whether slow on performance, you can be fired. Kasi di ba, it's, it's an ongoing recurring issue kasi before. It's the sales, the slow moving high tech, hindi mabenta, 'yung operations namin. Di ba, it's, it's part of the system. And regardless, kasi it's, it's being, it's being painted na there is an ill motive. Let me point it to the public. I was designated as OIC. Regardless whether this letter will be approved or denied, it will not make a difference on my part because I am not the appointing authority. The executive director has the authority to appoint, hire, or fire employees in PSDBM. However, I am an OIC based on the designation by the Secretary of Budget and Management. My only authority is to manage the office. I have no authority to hire or to fire. Now, that letter will not benefit me in any manner if it is approved or denied because I cannot hire or fire. But I wrote that letter as part of my function as OIC. In any event, that there is a new executive director, they will benefit from it, it's a legal question. Di ba? I, the only function, di ba? The question is, pinagdawa mo yan kasi gusto mo? No, I don't have the authority because I'm just an OIC. It is clear in the designation on my person that my only responsibility is to run the day-to-day operations of the office. The authority to appoint was not part of the ones dedicated to me. So whether or not that civil service, civil service letter would be acted upon positively or negatively, it will not affect my, my OIC designation. Second, it's a pure letter, di ba? Oh, what difference does it make? It doesn't make any difference, kasi a year after pa ang response ng Civil Service. On the third point, to say, ah, kasi may predetermination yan, may plant plunder. I'll just answer it straight, February four, there is no COVID.
Chairman, Mister Chairman.
Plan, magkaka-COVID tayo.
Mister Chairman. Attorney Lau.
Sir, go ahead sir.
Attorney Lau said that one year pa nagrespond 'yung, ah, Civil Service Commission, is that correct? Did I hear him correctly Mister Chairman?
Yes, I believe so Mister Chair.
Yeah, no, March, March nine, the CSC denied your request, and ya know, na sa timeline, and I have here the copy of the ah, resolution signed by Chairperson, ah, De La Rosa Bala, Commissioner Lizada, and Acting Director for Del Moro. Hindi one year?
Yes. I, I don't think.
Denied your request.
It's more than a year. It's more than a year because I wrote the letter on February twenty twenty.
So that's March, March nine twenty twenty-one?
Yes, March nine twenty twenty-one po, it's more than a year ang response sila. So while they make the response, we tend upon our function in the office. We made the same as before I entered into office, so we just continued the, the operations Mister Chair.
Okay, moving forward, let's go back to the transaction. Anyway, March twenty, merong FDA circular. Ang requirement do sa mga importers ang PPE is LTO license to operate and proof of application for notification, yun ang sufficient compliance for customs release. And then, on April six, FDA circular twenty twenty dash five four seven, ang kailangan na lamang LTO sufficient na compliance for customs release. And true enough, April fifteen, eto na 'yung, ah, na award na kayo ng fifty-four million pesos for the supply of two-point-four million surgical mass at twenty-two pesos and fifty ah, centavos each, I'm referring to Palmari, ano, of course. And then March sixteen, or April sixteen, dito 'yung nakasingit pa 'yung twenty-seven eighty-two, no? Ah, ang presyo niyo kasi, twenty-two fifty, twenty-seven eighty-two, and twenty-two pesos per piece. And then, you know, fast forward, May twenty-eight, kasi marami na kayo, three-point-eight billion na 'yung contract niyo ng one thousand nine hundred ten sets ang PPEs. Thus purchase order May eight, May twenty-six, naglabas uli 'yung FDA ah, circular twenty twenty zero one eight, ano? Importers of PPE, LTO shall be sufficient compliance for the customs release. Importers are advised to apply CPN, certificate of product notification prior to commercial sale and distribution of medical services. And then November nine, LTO and CPN, pati 'yung CMDN for customs release, no? The, the reason why I'm pointing this out Mister Chairman, parang there's a grand scheme to really allow Palmari ah, enough leeway to import all these, ah, medical supplies. That's, that's the point I'm trying to raise Mister Chairman. And, ah, again, ah, unless Mister Lincoln Ong, Michael Yang, and the rest of Palmari Pharmaceuticals, the incorporators, will tell us the truth in this, ah, in this, in this hearing, then we can just, ah, speculate on what really happened, you know? Ah, or the circumstances behind, circumstances behind all these transactions. So, I, I think I have exceeded my, my time, the time allotted to me Mister Chairman. Ah, otherwise, I will have to proceed to another, ah, matter.
Mister Chair.
Well, if you have more questions, the chairman has the leeway to allow you to continue the questions because you're on point. But I see Senator Delon having a question, go ahead Senator Delon.
Yes.
Senator Delon, you're on mute?
Yes, just to go back to Mister Lincoln Ong. Here is a resource person who is clearly lying on the record because he says the funds were corporate funds, corporate funds of Farmali. But, the financial statement, the audited financial statement indicates that beginning of two thousand twenty, they had only six hundred twenty-five thousand, which is the paid-up capital. Clearly, the corporation had no capacity to pay the initial order of fifty-four million. So it is not true at all, and there is a deliberate effort to mislead the committee by saying these are corporate funds. We asked him, who are the, ah, who advanced this payment? He said it was from, ah, Bank Rounds of Union Bank or something. Who owns the bank accounts? He is already evasive. This witness Mister Chairman is clearly lying. Is clearly lying, and, ah, in the, ah, case of Arnold, which is a nineteen fifty case. This senate has the power to detain, as we have detained people until they tell us the truth. This witness is both evasive and refuses to answer, or telling a lie. Ah, ah, therefore he has been declared in contempt earlier. We move that the contempt, ah, ah, order be now executed and we send our sheriffs, our, 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 our security people to arrest Mister Ong right now.
Yes, ah.
Second.
Is that Mister Lincoln, are you running, raising your hand? You have a chance to rectify the matter.
Ah, will I be allowed to clarify on the?
Yes, yes, you might have a chance to rectify the matter, you've been very, very evasive. The chair is giving enough leeway to rectify the matter, but so far, you've mess of, mess of yourselves of Mister Yang's statement and Mister Huang's statement. Yes.
Ah, Mister Chair.
You know what, I will change my ruling here. Will you please turn, ah, put your mask off, you are alone in the sala? I want to see, because you keep looking upward, is somebody give dictating questions and an earphone to you?
Ay, no, no, no po Mister Chairman, pwede ko pa tanggalin ang.
Just, just you warn me. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, kasi po ang tanong kanina is tungkol dun po sa, very specific eh, allow me to take uh, take you uh, point by point. Uh, ang unang, pinakaunang po transaction namin, our first ever transaction, transaction is uh, five-hundred-thousand uh, surgical mask. That time, I have access to supplier that the supplier is willing to give us the stocks. Pag nakapagkuha na kami ng bayad sa gobyerno, tsaka namin siyang babayaran. That same goes to the, to the fifty-four million, two, two million, two-point-four million pieces and ten. May, meron po akong mga records eh, para, para po namin mai-explain po sa'yo na maayos.
Sige, paliwanag mo.
Opo. So, uh, for the first ever transaction po na five-hundred-thousand, may access po talaga kami sa, sa inventory ng mga, mga importers. Nung time niya, we, we, wala pa kami, I think, I don't think we have an importer license. So, yung, yung, yung importer mo, nagtitiwala naman po sa akin. So, binigay sa'kin stocks para maisupply ko kay, kay PSDBM. And same goes on the two-point-four.
So you're changing your answer again. You're changing your answer again. Bago na naman to, nanghirap niya ng, do sa may importers license, yung ba gusto mong paniwalaan namin?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Ano 'yan ang mahirap po ng sisi ng ali, nagkakatampak-tapak ka sa alakara mo eh.
At saka hindi lang, hindi lang yun, Mr. Chairman. Sabi niya kanina, binayaran nila out of corporate funds.
Yes.
So, now he's saying that uh, the, this was loaned, this, this uh, face mask and face shields were, I don't know, loaned to them, whatever is in transaction, which enabled them to supply it to the government. Ganun po ba yun? Kailan nangyari? Kailan nangyari? Oh, kailan nangyari ang uh, pag, pag, pag-deliver si inyo ng supplier ng five-hundred-thousand face mask? Kailan?
Nung, nung meron na pong kaming uh, order from the PSDBM, pinadelive ko na agad. At pag nakab, magkakuha kami ng bayad, babayaran na nga agad yung supplier. Ay, Mr. Chair, yung, yung itong tatlo pong face mask, ano talaga, as in at, 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 ano, on credit talaga, as in, binigay lang, uh, pinutang lang talaga sa amin ng supply, yung mga stocks. Pag nakabu, pag nakapagkuha kami ng bayad, babayaran namin yung mga supplier.
Yun yung supplier, yun yung supplier na nirefer ni Mr. Yang.
Ay, uh, Mr. Chairman, yung po, yung kay Mr. Yang naman, yun yung malaking PPE na, yun po yung kinakailangan namin na tulong ni Mr. Mr. Yang.
At doon, nilabas. Ano nakikilang talaga si Mr. Yang?
Dito sa mga ibang transaksiyon, hindi po talaga. Dito sa malaking transaksiyon.
Lu, luko mo ba kami? Doon ang kinala, kailangan si Mr. Yang. Ngayon, tumapo talaga.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move to arrest this uh, Mr. Lincoln Ong and detain him until he tells, uh, until he tells us, he answers the questions and not be evasive and until he tells us the truth.
Second, Senator Lacson?
Yes, the same contempt citation should be issued against Michael Yang because earlier, when I asked him what role did he play, ang sagot niya, ang role niya lang was to introduce and then left them alone, which, as it appears now, is not the case because he played a major role in uh, continuously dealing with the suppliers by way of guaranteeing that they will be paid by Mr. Ong.
Right, right, um, Senator Palina, yes.
Yes, the questions raised earlier by Senator Lacson. First, Mr. Yang said, uh, he only had, he had no connection with Farmali and learned only about Farmali in the news. That's on record. And then, after which, he changed his uh, position. He said he only met Farmali in twenty-seventeen and never met them again. And then later on, Mr. Wang admits to knowing Mr. Lincoln Ong of Farmali. And then, he says, he introduced Lincoln Ong to the supplier. So he's, uh, just like the variant, just like the virus, his answers are mutating.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, may, may we be allowed to speak?
Yes, of course. This is a free country.
Mr. Chairman, what Mr. Yang said is that at that time when he introduced Lincoln to the suppliers, is he also told them that they can trust Mr. Lincoln uh, in terms of payment? That they can make their own payment. And this is a Chinese way of uh, making or doing business uh, is mainly because of trust.
They are public funds and they will be liable for it. And there are rules about money. You cannot just produce money from out of nowhere. You like papaliwanag, you have to learn, you have to know that the money has got to be explained, alright? So, you know, it cannot be like that. And let me just say, and let me just ask a question to Mr. Yang. Mr. Yang, you do not speak any language except Chinese?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang said that he knows a little bit of Tagalog.
Yes, alright. You've been here since nineteen ninety-six, is that correct?
Yeah,有一点.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-six. Correct?
对，只要告诉我九九年来菲律宾.
Yeah, he was here nineteen ninety-nine, Mr. Chairman.
Nineteen ninety-nine, okay. I know that you were here nineteen ninety-six. I got some information like that, no? But uh, you are the well-appointed presidential economic advisor. How did you connect, communicate to the president then?
那你怎么当时你是怎么跟那个?
I'm sure the president has speak Chinese.
平时简单的会，重要的我们都有翻译.
Uh, normally, they would be having an interpreter present, Mr. Chairman.
Let me show you your movie, okay? Can you show the? And I will ask the Senate to please take a look at how familiar the situation is for Mr. Yang. Very confident? Quick please, and while we're doing that, uh, show the other.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we didn't hear your question.
You're the one introducing to everybody. You had a big smile in your face.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Yang is saying that uh, his Tagalog has limitation. His Tagalog has limitation, Mr. Chairman. Uh, simple ones.
All I'm saying is, uh, do not uh, make it appear that you need a translator because you're the presidential economic uh, advisor. And uh, you have to speak somewhere in English or in Tagalog, and if you have an interpreter. This is the corridor of principal power in this country. And that could, and then uh, you can say you don't understand it, and that's one of the advantages that you may have. There you go, another picture that shows you're talking to the president.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang is saying.
I'd like to make a point here that you can speak to the president in Tagalog or English or whatever it is you're speaking to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang is saying that he can converse casually but with limited Tagalog only.
Yeah, that's already pointed out, alright? Uh, I can ask you in Tagalog and I'm sure you'll understand.
For you, when you can.
Uh, during, any, Mr. Chairman, in terms of Tagalog, he may not be able to hundred percent grasp the the proper.
I will accept that already.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you repeat the question?
Mr. Chairman, before we leave the chairman's video, may I just ask a follow-up?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Yang, talking again about that video that the chairman showed. Two men to your right in the video. And isn't the other one Mr. Alan Lim?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Yang is saying that the two person uh, that is one Cheng Ping Tsang and the other one is Lin Wei Shong. Uh, these are his friends.
So is Mr. Lin Wei Shong the same as Mr. Alan Lim?
He doesn't know, Mr. Chairman.
I'll leave it at that for now, Mr. Chairman, but I think Mr. Yang knows more than he is answering at this moment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Under contempt, he's not very forthright. I have many pictures of Mr. Wang with Mr. Lim. Uh, can you show the other pictures, please? And I got this, I did research, I didn't have to research it. I just had to look at uh, some newspaper accounts. There, Mr. Wang, is that uh, Alan Lim again?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang saying that uh, he there, uh, he get to know Mr. Lin Wei Shong only on twenty thirteen by the name of Lin Wei Shong.
That was not my question. Okay, but anyway, what is his name? Lin Wei Shong?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Lin Wei Shong.
In fact, he was the same guy that was uh, charged with the uh, involvement in drugs. And I'll show you the uh, charge sheet.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang.
I have to go because uh, you know, uh, the other senators have said that you're lying, so just wanna test your credibility again.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Yang is saying that he doesn't know uh, about the accusation about Mr. uh, Alan Lim that you were saying earlier.
But you have been friends with him since two thousand thirteen, as you say, and he's all with you, alright? And uh, Mr. Lin, go ahead, answer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I just confirmed with Mr. Yang, he said that yes, twenty thirteen, he met the person by the name of Lin Wei Shong.
Yeah, and uh, you are both uh, in Pili Holdings. You are a director, and I will show you. Uh, show the, show the holdings of Pili and along with the others. Quick, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang said that yes, uh, he is a business partner in under Pili Holdings.
Alright, so, uh, san yung, yung record namin, charge sheet siya, yung pinakita uh, the Colonel Sherto, di ba? And then, uh, go ahead, yeah, yeah, there, there you go. Is this the same man that you're talking about?
I'm sorry, come again, Mr. Chairman.
I'm showing to you a picture of Wen Li Chen. Initial profile of the drug personality. Is that Alan Lim there?
Uh, we don't have the picture yet.
Can you show the picture?
There's no picture being shown yet.
Uh, bear with me for a while, uh. Uh, we're trying very hard to show the picture so that uh, you can see it. There, can you show it now? Can you see it now? Can you see it now, please? Can everybody see it? Wala pa rin?
Wala pa rin po, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, uh, okay. Uh, we'll take one try and then we'll show it again. So I will ask a question to Mr. Man as you're trying to show. Uh, Mr. Lin, obviously, you're good friends, right? Uh, there are other pictures with you on a beach. Can you show the picture on the beach, Una? Again, I got this from uh, this are public uh, yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go. There. Alan Lim or Wen Li Chen or?
Uh, I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
You've been friends with him for thirteen years and you don't know?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Yang said he only knows a person by the name of Lin Wei Shong, but not.
Uh, I'm showing you the picture, di ba? Magkamukha ba?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, he's saying uh, that the picture is very blurred. He couldn't confirm.
Well, I don't think it's blurred, but anyway, I'm sorry I have to ask you these questions. I don't want to put you in discomfort. But I have to ask you this, just to be sure. The Senate President was said, and the name of Wen Lin Shao, Lin Shen is uh, there. Alright? I'm sorry, we have to ask you this.
He can't understand the English, uh, Mr. Chairman, so he couldn't.
You can, you can, right?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, he said that, uh, because what was the? Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, he's saying that he only knows Mr. Lin Wei Shong and that if, uh, you have to ask the right agency to do the proper investigation.
You're saying that's not the same person?
He couldn't confirm. He couldn't confirm, like he said. You have, I mean, Mr. Yang saying you have to do the investigation. He couldn't confirm.
Alright, but again, I show you some pictures again that I we got from the public uh, sources, uh. Uh, these are your pictures together. Are, are you, you're supposed to be a good judge of character. You're approached in high places and uh, uh, there you go, you're with the president with him again. Uh, and then uh, again, another picture, I think, on the beach, if I'm not mistaken. Can you show that? I really apologize. I don't want to put you in discomfort, but you know, this is an investigation where a lot of our people are involved. A lot of people are hungry. Deprived of their ayuda or help. Here it is, like. Can you make it a little bigger, please? There you go, uh, that is uh, Mr. Alan Lim or? And Michael Yang are the two men at the extreme left.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yang said that he only knows Lin Wei Shong and he doesn't know any person by the name of Alan Lim.
Well, that's the same person that I showed you, alright?
That, that is based on your uh, statements, Mr. Chairman, but he cannot confirm that.
I'm just asking you. I'm not made any kungkuk. I'm just asking you. These are one of the same person.
I already replied that I only know Lin Wei Shong.
Alright, okay. You are also in a corporation that involves a certain lady by the name of Rose Nono Lim.
Yes, you're, yes, Mr. Chairman.
In fact, she is the president, uh, uh, corporate secretary, if I'm not mistaken, Jason Usun in Pili Holdings. Rose Nono Lim, corporate secretary, Yan Hong Lim.
Sure.
And then again, you see Lin Wei Xiong, aka Alan Lim, vice chairman.
Vice chairman.
他说其实我们
Yes, uh, yes, uh, Mister Lin Wei Xiong is one of our brother and, and Rose Nono Lim as well.
And is he married to Rose Lim?
Come again, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
You see the ikotaitai of, uh, is Rose Lim ikotaitai of, uh, uh, Lin Wei Xiong, your good friend?
他在问Rose Nono Lim是不是 是不是林伟雄
Or girlfriend?
Yes, uh, Lin Wei Xiong is the husband of Rose Nono Lim.
Thank you. And then Pili Estate Group?
然后Pili
You're there again, Yang Hong Zhang?
也在里头
I'm sorry, that's your brother, right? Hong Yang, Hong? Yang, Hong Zhang, Yang.
Hong Yang Zhang是你的
Brother?
他说是我，我的哥哥啊
Yes, uh, it's his brother, Mr. Chairman.
So again, uh, by affinity, uh, Alan Lim's, uh, in, in this corporation, uh, the wife of Alan Lim, Rose Nono Lim, is also in this corporation, Pili Estate Group. And then the name of our mega mix, uh, shown here, Rose Nono Lim against president, she is, as you say, the wife. Uh, and also in Farmally Biological, Wang Su Yan appears again, uh, our president who is here, Rose Nono Lim, treasurer. And there you go. Uh, again, Rose Nono Lim, the wife of, uh, uh, Mister, uh, uh, Lin Wei Xiong, right? And then as I go to the left, in Xiangwei, Xiangwei, that is a Pogo Corporation. Are you familiar with that?
你你认识熊伟吗
He knows the company, but, uh, he has, he only knows them, he, he knows the company, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm just saying, these are the things that we find out, and, uh, now, uh, Mister Lincoln Wong, who said that, uh, he gets guidance from you to make sure that you can guarantee, and the president himself says you are the pagador. Which means that you really have connections with Farmally, because Lin, Lincoln Wong is able to transact business without any documentation as to where the money came from? Why they allow you to translate?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, what Mister Yang basically did was to introduce Mister Lincoln to his friends, uh, in China for supply, for potential being a supplier. And then he also mentioned that these people, that they can trust on Lincoln to be able to
So in fact, it is it is not accurate for you to say. And listen to my question, because you said first time you saw them and the last time you saw them was when you saw the president in March twenty seventeen. And then all of a sudden, your name comes out, and now you're saying you introduced Mister Lincoln Wong, uh, and that his credit is good because you are practically, as Mister Lincoln Wong says, practically a guarantor, is that correct?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may shed sunlight on that as well.
No, 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 I'm asking the question here right now for the moment. I'll, I'll get to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. So Mister Lincoln Wong is being guaranteed by you, and Mister Lincoln Wong cannot show any paper trail that you got some money, and that he is able to transact all these orders in China without any paper trail. And Mister, uh, Wang says they have a bank which transacted, uh, where they transacted the letter of credit. When I asked him, how did you manage to do that? You have a letter of credit? And I said, yes. Very readily, and I said, uh, which bank? He said, Union Bank. Very good bank. And yet, the transaction happened in November. For seven months, pitong buwan, una kaya magtransact ng April. So sa, in, in between April and, uh, April and, uh, is it November? Uh, where was the money coming from? And Lincoln said, oh, I was getting, you know, uh, uh, aid from everybody. Ganyan ang Chinese way, we're not gonna accept that, you know that? Because of that? Pwede ba yon? Nasasabi mo na sabi niyan, and you expect us to believe?
Mr. Chairman
Pesos of the people's money that are being spent to an unknown corporation, what we call prima para, a first-time corporation with only six hundred twenty-five thousand pesos. Ang kapital. Tapos you're saying, oh, marami kami inutangan, nagagarrantian ni Mister Michael Yang, nasinasabi ng una, wala siyang pakiram sa Farmally. And then all of a sudden, nakita natin ang mga connectivity, subasok na si Alan Lim. Na si, ayon, pumasok na 'yung asawa ni Alan Lim, magkakasama sila. In other words, talagang paikut-ikut lang kayo dyan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
I, I'll get to you. Uh, no, Lincoln, tama? Okay. I know that you're chomping on your bit, Mister Wang.
Uh, um, Chairman
Before we leave, Mister Yang, if I may?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just another question to Mister Yang. Tanong po kay Mister Yang tungkol dun sa video na pinakita ng chairman. Sabi po ni Mister
Di akin yon, ah, di akin yon, pinakita ng RITM yon.
Right, that's right, Mister Chairman. It's easily available on YouTube.
RTBN, RTBN, sorry.
Yes, Mister Chairman, opo. So, sabi po ni, niyo, Mister Yang, nakilala niyo si Mister Zheng Bing Chang sa video na iyon, ina-identify niyo po siya. Uh, bilang kayo 'yung dating presidential economic advisor kay presidente, hindi niyo ba siya pinayuhan, hindi niyo ba siya binigyan ng advice? Na 'yung mga tao na connected sa Farmally International ay fugitive na pugante sa bata sa Taiwan, kasi meron silang warrants of arrest. 'Yung magamanghuang at pati si Mister Zheng na nakilala niyo sa video.
Uh, you guys so,
Uh, Mister Chair, Chairman, uh, what Mister Yang said at that time, uh,
一七年他们现在上市公司
Yeah, the company is in good standing and there were no records or anything.
Pero siguro naman, Mister Yang, dahil close nga kayo ni presidente, matagal na.
So it's
Concerned pa rin kayo sa kanya. So siguro, napalitahan niyo na kahit sa jaryo lang, itong mga naging problema ng Farmally. Hindi ba kayo nag, uh, na-concern, nasabihan siya na Mister President, ito palang kumpanya eh, ang mga tao nito ay wanted for financial crimes, may standing warrant pa nga sa, sa Taiwan, hindi niyo ba siya in-inform?
Okay, Mister Chairman, what Mister Yang said that, you know, uh, during the twenty seventeen, he introduced, uh, then things didn't transpire for potential business opportunity, then after that, they have no more communication.
Oh, well, alam po natin, Mister Chairman, na, uh, sinamahan ni, ni Mister Yang, si presidente sa opisina ng, uh, Full Wind International sa siya min
Ota,总统
So, okay, at least sinabi ni Mister Yang na nagkita pa sila ng two thousand seventeen, pero I really find it hard to believe po na at this point in time, hindi naisip ni Mister Yang na importanteng i-inform at i-advice si presidente na fugitives na at, uh, ma-prize si presidente na 'yung mga tao, 'yung mga kumpanya na engaged 'yung gobyerno niya nga, 'yung panahon ng pandemya ay wanted for criminal activities. Medyo mahirap po paniwalaan, Mister Chairman. I'll leave it at that for now po. Salamat, uh, uh, Mister Chairman.
Okay, Mister Chairman, what Mister Yang said that after the twenty seventeen, there has been no more communication after. Uh, there is no more business, so there's, uh, and then he doesn't always have an open
你就是没有跟总统直接 正常的那个沟通的嘛，对吧
什么正常，你是不要说
Sorry, let me just re-clarify.
不要说我们一七年来
So, twenty seventeen
来这边考察完就没有来
After they made their feasibility study. Uh, yeah, after they made their feasibility study, uh, then Okay, then, so after twenty seventeen, uh, when they made their feasibility study, there is no business that progressed. And then after that, there's nothing more to report to the president because there's no more any progress or anything about the situation.
Na pinabalok, pinasinongalingan naman ni Lincoln, so well, sabi ni Lincoln. Apakah sino siguro niya 'yung mga supplier na backup siya? Eh, Michael Yang?
I'm, I'm sorry, come again, Mister Chairman.
Pinasinongalingan po ni Lincoln
That when he negotiated by telephone, which is really weird, he took their word for it because sinasabi niya si Michael Yang ang guarantor.
他说呢，你你说嘛，你
是啊，他说 Lincoln 中国也有联，他中国也有可能派人去谈，跟他谈嘛
Uh, Mister Chairman, yes, uh, Lincoln may also have his people in China who could also probably, uh, discuss and trans, uh, negotiated with these suppliers.
Question is, sabi ni Lincoln, pagka-usap niya 'yung mga tao sa China, sinasabi niya ang backup niya rito, or worse to that effect, ay si Michael Yang. And that was
他背后的支持人是杨总 Backup 阿杨总
Mister Chairman, Mister Yang, may interject on this part?
Just a moment, please. I'm asking somebody a question.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
你就是介绍
对，给我是介绍
Okay, Mister Chairman, Mister Yang said that he just simply introduced them.
Alright, you want to limited that, but Lincoln Chen denies, Lincoln Wong denies it. So now we're saying Lincoln Wong is lying and that he is showing that you, uh, he is misrepresenting your name, is that correct?
Very quickly, Mister Chair, just very quickly, on, on that point that you raised, Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Mister Pangrinan.
Yes, thank you, um, uh, tanong kay Mister Lincoln Wong, pag sinabing guaran, nagga-guarantee siya, si Mister, uh, Yang, igaguarantee niyan na mababayaran 'yung supplier ng gobyerno. Tama yon, ano, kayo, kasi babayaran kayo ng gobyerno, tama?
Tama, Mister Chairman, yes po
In other words, uh, well, sig, siguro ang naisip niyo, ang lakas ni Mister Yang sa gobyerno, kaya niyang, uh, mainso na 'yung bilyong-bilyong halaga ay mababayaran ng gobyerno, tama ba yon? Yon ang, yon ang, yon ang, uh, guarantee na binibigay ni Mister Yang na lalabas 'yung pondo ng gobyerno.
Sir, yes, sir
At babayaran niyo, 'yung supplier, tama ba yon? That's correct. Anyway, you already answered it, uh, you already answered yes, uh, to my question, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman, for the record, lang about the answers of Mister Yang earlier.
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mahirap lang talaga maniwala na since twenty seventeen, wala ng komunikasyon sina Mister Yang at si presidente, because just very recently, the past days, dinipensahan very emotionally ni presidente si Mister Yang. At 'yung alam nating lahat, 'yung ganyang mga matagal na at close na mga relationship, reciprocally yon. So kung may care at concern si presidente kay Mister Yang, naniniwala ako na ganun din ang pakiramdam ni Mister Yang kay presidente. So, mahirap talagang paniwalaan na wala ng communication. Just for the record, Mister Chairman, salamat.
His statements are noted. I just want to say that he was referring to the fact that he never saw Farmally after that meeting, which is belied by Lincoln Wong. He didn't talk about the president, he was, because in fact, he was, as you say, defended by the president all the time.
Mister Chairman
Actually asking about the president
Right, right, right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman
On this Mister Wang?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. So, um, to put light to the whole history of what happened, it's after the meeting with the president in March twenty seventeen, um, uh, my com, ex, um, the Taiwan Farmally instructed me to pursue the expansion to the Philippine market. But as we reached the, uh, the end of, uh, twenty eighteen, they started to show no interest to further development of the, of, of this in the Philippine market.
Who did you show no interest?
The, my previous company, the Taiwan Farmally, showed no more interest in continuing
No interest in what?
To build, the plan was to build a plant, a manufacturing plant in the Philippines.
So you're saying you have no more interest in putting a plant?
The Taiwan Farmally.
Well, how can you have a Taiwan Farmally investor when you have already destroyed your name in Taiwan?
I'm talking in twenty eighteen, uh, at the end of twenty eighteen, Mister
You had no more interest in investing in the Philippines? Why did you ever have that? Is that what you told the president, you were going to invest in the Philippines?
Yes, we told the president, the meeting in twenty seventeen, March, was that the Taiwan Farmally, the listed company, was to build a manufacturing plant in the Philippines.
Where in the Philippines, if I may ask?
They haven't, they didn't decide on it because they didn't
So it was all in Kuwait, in expectancy? You don't know where you're going to invest, you just say, I want to meet the president because I might invest, is that correct?
There was, uh, intent
That's what, that's, that's how I take it.
We did look at a few locations, but no one was, um, concluded. But I just want to share
What was concluded? You cannot conclude on the basis of, uh, 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 of, uh, a, a desire to invest in something that you have not said so, and you don't even know where to invest it?
Uh, Mister Chairman, I cannot represent that entire board of that Taiwan
Yes, you can. As you can.
I, I cannot, I'm only
Anyway, I'm not gonna argue with you, that's your thing
Sorry, Mister Chairman, but I just want to say
Obviously, you cannot represent anymore because the board's, uh, the, the reputation of Taiwan Farmally has been sinked or terribly destroyed in Taiwan, is that correct?
We only made known of this in, in August twenty twenty-one.
Even if you knew it in two thousand eighteen or twenty twenty or in twenty ninety-four, it is already destroyed because that was a very big scam that was pulled, fifty million dollars was lost, correct?
Mister Chairman, I just would like to answer on why did Mister Michael Yang
You're saying that you no longer, you know, as if the Philippines is going to jump at your investment, you know? I got a lot of investments for Taiwan in the Philippines. And they put in their money, they borrowed money, it was all on the up and up, in the open.
Yes, yes.
And when they said they were gonna come over, huh? Liting, we said they were going to go south. You're not even Taiwanese, you're Singaporean.
That's, that's precisely why I left the company in twenty nineteen, because I felt embarrassed that a company will make its commitment to a country to do something and not pull through.
You know, we're poor, we're a poor country. And when you say, you didn't make a commitment, and now you're going not to invest, is that what you're trying to say?
I felt embarrassed by my
Take your investment elsewhere. We don't want to do business with people who trick the, the, the stock market, where public people or people buy their stocks out of trust for the company. Is that what you're trying to say? We'll answer you right now. I certainly wouldn't wanna do business with you. Okay, you don't even know where your father is, right?
I, I don't
Where do you think your father is right now?
I don't know, probably
And I sympathize with you. Because I lost my father many years ago, and I still pine for him. Okay? Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I just feel like
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to argue, I just want to tell
Who's arguing? I'm not arguing with you.
I, 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 I may have been portrayed as I'm arguing with you, as, as
You said that, I didn't say that.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to say why Mister Michael Yang said he didn't know about Farmally Pharmaceutical Corporation, just after that, after, in two thousand nineteen, when I quit the previous Taiwan company, I was very embarrassed. I was embarrassed to everyone, I don't know
I'm sure you were, yes
I was, and so, I did not inform Mister Michael Yang when I set up my own company.
Well, nobody said that, alright?
And I intentionally asked
Nobody said that, but it's cannot be denied that Mister Farmally, Farmally came in with Mister Yang directing traffic when you went to see the president. I didn't see you engaging in a very lively talk with the president, and you can speak English. I didn't see your father I didn't see your father in a lively conversation with the president, and I'm sure he didn't, doesn't, uh, he speaks English very well because he's from Singapore. But Mister Michael Yang was very, very ebullient. He was the master of ceremonies.
Uh, I'm not here to defend Mister Michael Yang, I'm here to defend.
That's what I thought you were doing.
Uh, no, definitely not, I'm here to defend.
I take your word for it then.
Yeah, I just want to say on record that, um, even though he didn't know about this Farmali Pharmaceutical Corporation, when we received the bid for the PPEs and the BGI's, um, the quantum was so large, we seek all the resources we can find, and I asked Lingkong to approach Michael Yang to help with the supplies.
So you asked him, you asked him to get help in the supply?
And the funding.
And the funding?
Yes.
Why, is he a man of great means? He owns a, a building, I think, in Davao, uh, he started selling telephones?
Because we.
Shafongs?
We, because he, I think he is a successful businessman, a Chinese businessman with a lot of connections in China with all these supplies. And so I.
He's very well connected, okay, we're willing to accept that, because I can see that he was even invited, uh, uh, to go to China, and he gets a lot of, uh, uh, you know, strength from, uh, friendship with our president. So I, I will leave it at that.
But.
He was suggesting anything, but you're the one suggesting that he's very, but you see, we're just reacting to what Mister Michael Yang said, that after that meeting, you never talked with him, now you're saying that you wanted Mister Yang to help you in China because he's very well connected, correct?
Yes, and he didn't know it was me.
Answer the question, yes or no?
I asked Lingkong if he could ha, talk to Mister Michael Yang to help PPC Farmali Pharmaceutical Corporation, which he did not know it was owned by me, well, I have a share in that company.
Yeah, but, but, but you were with him, and, uh, later on, earlier on, you said you asked his help so that, because he was such a big man in China, and therefore you needed his help. Am I, am I wrong?
I do not.
Did I hear you wrong?
I said, what, Mister Chairman, what I said is, I asked Lingkong to approach Mister Michael Yang.
You, you, don't mum, don't mumble, just say it.
Uh, Mister Chairman, what I said was, I asked Mister Lingkong Ong to approach Mister Michael Yang, and omitting the details that I was actually a shareholder of Farmali Pharmaceutical Corporation.
There you go, so you asked Mister Lingkong Ong because you needed Michael, uh, Yang's support to get the cloud in China?
Yes.
Understand you correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, now I will ask you another question, if I may.
Yes, Mister Chairman.
How old are you?
I'm thirty-one years old, Mister Chairman.
Very young, very young. And, uh, you know, when you first met the president, that was about what? Five years ago, four years ago?
Uh, in twenty seventeen, yes.
About twenty-seven, twenty-six, would you say?
Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, you're a very strong entrepreneur, because, uh, you're bidding for billions of pesos worth of, uh, uh, medical products such as, uh, you know, uh, masks and, uh, C, uh, PPEs, right? And you got them, right?
Yes, we awarded the bits.
Company got them, right?
Yes, we, the company was awarded.
Who was it who told you, uh, who encouraged you to go, uh, to PSDBN? But you're new here.
I think based on our, my recollection, there was a ready, um, procurement by PSDBN from the Chinese circle, I think it was maybe referring to that um, military plane and military vessel where they went to deliver their goods. So we felt that if they are procuring in that manner, we should try to, you know, put ourselves out there, because, uh, Mister.
You got, you got to use the plane, right, right?
We did not use the plane, we heard about someone using.
What does that got to do with my question? My question is, how did you get to know that there were big deals to be made in PSDBN? Who told you that?
There was, um, talk in the Chinese community that there is perhaps a procurement by the PSDBN.
You're so lucky, like Mister Lau is so lucky. You got eight point seven, eight point nine billion, right? Eight point eight billion, right?
Miss, um, uh.
Yes, yes.
I don't understand the question, Mister Chairman.
It's very clear, you're so lucky, you got eight point eight billion contracts, not including twenty twenty-one.
Um, I would say, Mister Chairman, that we were lucky to be awarded, but we worked hard to get it delivered.
Oh, yes, of course you work hard, you got it without, with the six hundred fifty thousand capital, six hundred twenty-five thousand peso capital. I don't think you can get to first base in China with that kind of capital. Or in America, or in Taiwan, with six hundred twenty-five thousand, you can get fifty-eight million pesos, let's start with that. One million dollar contract, and then later on, it went up to as high as three point eight billion. Alright?
Mister Chair, just, just very quickly, one, one quick question, was he aware, with your permission, that, uh, FD, the FDA did not, they did not have a license to operate, uh, from the FDA to import, uh, uh, these products that they brought in, that they only planted in, in, in January of, uh, twenty twenty-one after bringing in billions already, was he aware of that? He, 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 he is saying they were working hard, you, 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 you know, you were able to get it by cutting so many corners.
We have FDA LTOs since March twenty twenty. I don't understand the honorable Sanders question.
Shereid, Shereid Puno was there in your meeting with the president, so they're on notice, you are, they were brought to Vindanau to meet with you, correct? You had to work hard to get Shereid Puno to be there, he's the FDA, uh, general, uh, Director General at the time.
I believe, miss, um, Director, Ex-Director General Puno was not, no longer FDA Director since, I can't remember when.
Senator Delong, did you have a question?
No, are you yield to Senator Laxon?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Senator Laxon?
There's a couple of good questions. Uh, when you submitted your letter of intent to PSDBN, I will address this to Mister Lingkong Yang or Mister Wang Chuyen. What documents did you attach to your letter of intent?
Mister Chairman, uh, during that time, letter of intent plus sample only.
No, 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 what did you attach? Ano mga dokumentong inattach ninyo sa letter of intent?
Yung, uh, Mister Chairman, ang first, uh, first letter of intent namin, it's only, uh, only the the letter of intent plus the sample only. Wala namang pong mga attachment nung time niyan.
But eventually, you submitted documents, diba? Pertinent documents like the GIs or articles of incorporation, hindi kayo narequire ng PSDBN?
Uh, that's for the field Jeff, uh, field Jeff's po, Mister Chairman. Pero after nung namin magsubita, sabi po ng LOI, uh, magsesend mo naman po sila ng RFQ sa amin, and then we just have to comply 'yung mga requirements po sa RFQ.
Any requirements that you submitted?
Uh, wait, na po ah.
GIs?
Yung, uh, give me few seconds po.
Well, general information sheet, diba? Ano kayo ma-identify? Kung wala kayo attachment, paano ma-identify 'yung corporation, just a mere letter of intent with nothing attached to your letter of intent, and there you go, you were awarded?
Uh, send, send ri lang po ah, Mister, Mister Chairman, nandyan na tataranta po ah, pero allow me, uh.
Yeah, relax lang.
Uh, Mister Chairman, na dito ang ang requirement po nung, nung sa RFQ is mayor's permit for year two thousand twenty, uh, income tax return, uh, and it's, uh, net financial contracting capacity and field Jeff's registration number upon receive of, uh, a notice of award. Yun po, yun po 'yung para sa mask po.
Okay, so, dun sa GIs, diba naka-indicate syempre 'yung pangalan ng mga incorporators? Lahat, personal circumstances, no, apati address, kung Filipino, lahat, diba?
Yes po.
Okay, so I have here your articles of con, incorporation, 'yung Farmali Pharmaceutical Corporation. I noticed here, Timohit Dogani, Justin Garado, and si Wang Chuyen, iisa 'yung address, fourteen A, Makinli Place condominium. Did they share the same, uh, residence, the same address?
I can confirm that, yeah, during that time po, yes po.
So, ang tanong ko ngayon kay Attorney Lau, diba sa Bayan Han Two? I know this because I was the one who proposed the amendment to this, ano, section four U ng, uh, one, one, four, uh, six, nine. One, one, four, nine, four. Ang sinasabi rito, okay, tama lang 'yung expeditious. Uh, procurement of the following as it need arises, in the most judicious, economical and expeditious manner. Pag sinabi mong judicious, diba dito papasok 'yung due diligence, 'yung economical, dito papasok 'yung mas mababa? Attorney Lau?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hindi mo napansin sa dokumento ng, sa articles na iisa 'yung address ng datlong incorporators?
That was not required, Mister Chairman, what is required is that it be, uh, procure it in the most expeditious manner, and we made sure, Mister Chairman.
No, expeditious is under Bayan Han One.
Yes, we do not.
Bayan Han Two.
Yes, we do not pay unless they deliver, that is the most crucial part of it all. Kasi ang concern po natin, paano kung nag-release tayo ng bayad, tapos hindi sila nag-deliver? Yun po ang sagot nun, how basic it is, we don't release money unless they deliver. Kung pupunta tayo sa ibang agencies, kahit lahat ng agencies sa buong Pilipinas, they bid, they have all the documents, on its face, pwede niyan i-comply, pagkatapos nagbigay ng fifteen percent, what happened? They don't show up, nawawala ang fifteen percent ng government na down payment. But in this instance, the primary question is this, kasi ang layo, layo na ng discussion natin, the basic question should be this. Did the government, in this instance, release money before having the ITC deliver? Did the government release money at the knock of, ng, ng supplier? Never once in the instance of PSDBN that that happened to Farmali? They delivered before we paid after inspection.
Uh, yes, we are being lectured by this Attorney Lau, can you yield the floor to me for one second?
Yes.
Mister Lau?
Yes, sir.
Mister Lau, you are aware of the requirement of that the contracting party, that the supplier must, uh, must comply, but you might, that they must show a net financial contracting capacity as required by Republica, uh, ninety-one eighty-four? You are aware of that?
Yes, that is for infrastructure contracts, Mister Chairman.
Yes, that's, yes, that's, uh, the answer, now, is there anything? Yeah, wasn't it mentioned earlier by one of you that, uh, they, they look for net financial capa, okay, so how do you determine the financial contracting capacity of a supplier?
That is not, um, one of the requirements in a common supply.
Mister Lau, you are not, you're saying it is not a part of the requirement?
It is part of the requirement in a infrastructure contract.
In a supply agreement, in a supply agreement, you're saying it is not required?
Yes, during Bayan Han One, Mister Chairman.
It is not required. Doesn't ordinary common sense and prudence dictate that you should not award fifty-four million pesos worth of a contract for a company with six hundred twenty-five thousand capitalization? You keep on being technical and say that it's not required. But would a prudence, I, I'm still asking you the question, would a prudence require you to at least raise a red flag when you award fifty-four million pesos worth of supply to a company with six hundred twenty-five thousand?
Two things to answer that, first point, the fifty-four million was that awarded one time. Second, uh, three points, second point, the award was built, uh, was established time and again, point by point, transaction per transaction. If you fulfill one transaction, it's your credentials, but the next transactions build up your second credential. Third point, Mister Chairman, common sense dictates that we preserve the money of the government. And how did we preserve the go, the money of the government? We did not pay a single centavo to the supplier until they delivered. That is the highest safeguard that we can do for the country.
Please, Christ, will you please stop lectures, Mister Lau? Stop lecturing on, 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 okay, uh, okay, I have rea, we have heard you, okay? We have heard you, the point remains, okay, how much was the first contract given to Farmali?
I think the best person to answer that is the PSDBN staff, I don't have record.
No, because you said there were three, uh, this is fifty-four million, is that just one transaction, but several? Question, what was the first contract?
Technical mask, Mister Chairman.
Oh, yeah, okay. The ITR for twenty nineteen, was it submitted?
Yes, I think.
Farmali?
Farmali, Mister Chairman.
Oh, yeah, anyway, um. Now, let me shift to Mister, uh, I, 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 I'll, I'll go back to you later, Mister Lau. Um, yes, uh, Mister Yang. Are, are you a?
你是.
Are you a, um, licensee of any Pogo license personally? Were you granted a Pogo license?
没有，我没有.
No, Mister Chairman.
Are you connected with any company which was granted a Pogo license?
你是不是有跟一些公司
Remember your other oath.
Yahso,我没有, yahso.
No, Mister Chairman.
Alright, do, uh, do you have any relative who was granted a Pogo license?
这个他们有跟我没关系.
Uh, if his relative ever has, uh, it has nothing to do with him.
I am not saying that it has something to do with you, just answer me as a fact, do you have any relative granted a Pogo license?
亲戚有没有这个?
Yahso,我不知道.
He is not aware, Mister Chairman.
Oh,没有，没有参与.
You are, you are not aware. You, earlier, your statement was, you did not exert, you did not exert any influence on the grant of any license, are you changing that now?
Mister Chairman, I just like to clarify the question again, you asked if he did not use any influence?
No, he was the one who stated that, not me. He was the one who stated that. My question is very simple. Do you have any relative who is a Pogo licensee?
Yahso,我不知道他们有拿，我不知道.
He doesn't know, Mister Chairman.
Yahso,我不知道.
You do not know?
He doesn't know, Mister Chairman, he's not involved.
Nobody said he is involved, but now, do you have any relative uh, who is, uh, a stockholder of any company who is a licensee of Pogo?
Yahso,我不知道，这明白，我问我，我
He doesn't know, Mister Chairman.
He doesn't, alright, so let's accept it as that, and I will, uh, confront you later, uh, next, the hearing on the evidence of this, thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, uh, uh, yes, Senator Andiveras.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, just a quick manifestation on the, uh, related to the interpolation of the minority leader. Uh, we are former Yusek Lau.
I have to call Senator Pagadina after you, so that Senator Pagadina doesn't think he's for lying, okay?
Just a brief manifestation, uh, Mister Chair, not a question. You and Kiko, um, uh, Yusek, uh, Lau said something that was earlier contradicted by, uh, reply given by, uh, Mister, uh, Ong. Uh, because Mister Ong earlier said, na binayara nila 'yung suppliers nila. na binayaran nila 'yung suppliers nila sa China from money received from the government. So, admission po yun, diba? Na wala silang financial capacity. Walang financial capacity ang Farmali. So, nakakapagtaka, inamin yun in effect ng Farmali kanina. Tapos, uh, napaka, uh, maramdamin 'yung statement ni former Yusek Lau, uh, to the contrary. Kung alam yun ng Farmali, bakit hindi man lang alam yun ng PSDBM? Another sign, Mr. Chairman, of the absence of due diligence. Salamat po, Mr. Chairman, salamat, Sen Kiko.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator Andoveras. Senator Pangadinan is recognized. Please proceed. Senator Pangadinan?
So, yes, I have a few questions, uh, DBMPS, on the delivery of, uh, PPEs. First question is that, uh, there was a delivery on, uh, April, uh, of, uh, PCR, R, RP, uh, PCR kits, uh, test kits, is that not right? April of twenty twenty by Farmali. Um, Mister Lau?
Um, I think PSDBM has records on that.
No, you, you signed the, the record, uh, you signed.
With the government, I will answer to the best of my ability based on my knowledge. But, uh,
Well, this was the first, this was the first, uh, delivery, I think, of PCR tests in April of twenty twenty. So, uh, well, the record is there, it was submitted to us. Uh, PCR, uh, tests, testing kits. Except that the information that we received from IR, I, RITM personnel was that the first delivery in April was incomplete, was not a complete, uh, delivery because, uh, the swab, the swabbing and the extraction came in June. Uh, in other words, the purchase of the testing kits that arrived in April could not be used until the swabbing extraction kits followed, uh, sometime in July, uh, in June, sorry. Uh, can the DOH confirm this if Mister Lau cannot, uh, remember?
Um, let's, I cannot answer as to the confirmation.
No, no, I'm already asking the DOH. If you cannot answer, I'm already asking the DOH to confirm this. And the RITM, are they here? I, I ask this because, uh, many local governments, uh, in April were complaining that they were provided with testing kits that they could not use because there was no extraction kits delivered. And it turns out, when we looked at the documents, the documents will show that they first purchased, delivered the testing kits in April, but the extraction followed in June. So, from April to June, 'yung mga dineliver nung April, hindi magamit. At halos siguro mag-expire na. Can the RITM or someone from the DOH, uh, confirm this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I ask that, uh, Director Sonia Carlos be, uh, recognized?
Yes, please.
Before, before you do that, I was called by, I had a call from a very, uh, from Senator Soto because he had to leave. I believe, uh, Mister, uh, with all, with all due respect, uh, to, uh, Senator Pangadinan, uh, Mister, Mister Wang, he asked me to address a question to Mister Wang.
Yes, please, please, uh, we will
Mister Wang?
They're still looking for the an- or preparing the answer. Go ahead, go ahead, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mister Wang?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Lincoln, uh, your man is about to be arrested, and I was about to ask him for his address. Is there anything you want to say, uh, that will, uh, possibly exculpate him?
I think, uh, Mister Chairman, he, firstly, he's, um, down with COVID and he's sick, so, and he's slightly confused.
I, I will beg your pardon, uh, please speak a little louder and get direct to the point.
I just wish to state on record that we did, um, with, uh, receive Mister Michael Young's help with, um, borrowed money from him to pay for this.
You borrowed money from Mister Young? You're now saying categorically
Yeah.
that you borrowed money from Mister Michael Young?
The company, not personally, the company.
Of course, of course, the company.
I think, um, Mister Lincoln Ong was hesitant to say that because, um, it was just courtesy because at a time when we really needed help to source and pay for these things, he offered help. So, Mister Lincoln Ong was just, that's why I want to put it on statement that perhaps it is, this is what caused him to be evasive. And since the money was borrowed, uh, Mister Lincoln, it was to our accounts, and we, we paid for it. Therefore, his statement that it came from a corporate account is correct and factual. So, I just want, wish the committee to take that into consideration and not cite him in contempt because I think it's just, you know, when someone helped you at a difficult time, and you have to say things that might implicate them, you know, it's just very difficult. But, um, what he said is factual. We did receive his help, but only after we were awarded the contract. So, that is what I want to say. So, I hope you can put that in consideration for Mister Lincoln Ong.
Well, I will ask Mister Lincoln Ong because, uh, you are saying that you have knowledge and you have actual knowledge, correct? That Mister Michael Young gave money, uh, to Farmali. So, correct, sir?
Uh, Mister Chairman, to be precise, uh, uh, I'll be very honest, uh, Michael Young paid, uh, probably advance and paid, uh, the, the snacks. But, I mean, the goods.
And how much was that? You're already going drowning, now please tell the truth.
Mister Chairman, uh, we really need to pull out the record so we can be very precise.
No, no, you put it on the record, now.
I think it's one thousand plus.
One thousand?
One thousand? What?
I really have to check the record, Mister Chairman.
What?
I think he's talking about percentage.
I, I have to check the record, I'm not, uh, Mister Chairman.
No, 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 this is
I'm not trying to be evasive, but allow me to pull out the records.
Mister Chairman, I think the arrangement was, since we will not be able to finance these things, and we really needed to do that so that we would not get bloodlisted, he offered to borrow us the money so that we will be able to pay for it.
And how much was borrowed? Was lent?
I don't have the exact number, to be honest, Mister Chairman, we don't have the exact number. But we would pay him back once we receive the money from the government.
Uh, Mister Lau?
Go ahead.
Mister, I mean, not the Sebel, you are the certified public account tank of, uh,
Before that, before that, Senator Dick, can I just ask him? So, at the time that the contract was awarded to you, you had no financing whatsoever? Because you say it is after that, after, uh, uh, after you got the contract that you approached Michael Young. So, when you bidet or when you were negotiating to get the contract, you had absolutely no funds to buy the supplies?
We will, uh, Mister Chairman, we are hoping
Yes or no? Uh, no, no, at the time that you were awarded, you had no funds to carry out your obligations?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I would say we did not have sufficient funds.
Yes, because this, uh, Lau is so arrogant and say that he complied with, with all the requirements. So, here you are, the basic financial capacity requirement has not been complied, was not available because you, the, the, uh, grantee or, uh, or the one who was given the contract admitted that they had no funds, and then they went to Michael Young.
Mister Chairman, um, there was no requirement submitted to us on the financial requirements. Whatever requirements they submitted to us, comply.
Don't, Mister Huang, do not argue with me on what the law is, alright? So, okay, so, we just stick to the facts. The fact is, you got your financing from Mister Young after you got the award. Question, how much was that? For, uh, is it, uh, the, the first contract, so fifty-four million?
No.
Was the first award? How, how much did you borrow from Mister Young?
Mister, Mister Chairman, um, the only contracts that we really seek help on are on the first, uh, PPE contract, as well as the BGI contract, the first BGI contract.
So, how much, how much?
I don't have that record with me, Mister Chairman. But, out of surgical mass, we did not seek help from, if, if I'm, my collection is right, I think I'm correct, that we did not seek help from Mister Michael Young for the surgical mass. And as well, for the A-Star, it was funded by the company also. And for the, our contracts this year, we did not seek any more help from him. If we could not seek help from anyone, we would not. But it was a time where, I guess, the intention was that we are three young men, we are greedy. We wanted to buy off a bigger contract.
Well, yes, yes, we agree. Uh, Huang, Mister Huang, Mister Huang, I don't, I don't fault you for your ambitions. Uh, it is natural that as a young businessman, you try to get the, the most and the best contract. What we are talking about is from the Philippine side, there were certain basic requirements that must be complied with, among which is the, uh, financial capacity of your company. You won the contract without a single peso, and that is why afterwards, you had to go to Mister Michael Young. Those are facts, and, uh, whether or not, uh, uh, that is, uh, it's longer a question of whether or not that's true, because those are facts established. The matter of the consequence or, or, or the implications, uh, let's not discuss that here. Uh, because we are just, uh, looking after the facts and how the law will be applied. Uh, thank you, uh, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman, if I may, a short reply. We realize that, um, we've caused a huge ruckus, but we just want to make sure that people don't think that we are a dummy for Mister Michael Young. We are, we have thoughts, we have ambitions, we have, uh, we work on our resources, we plan, so, it's just
I never said that you're, we never said that you're a dummy, Mister Huang. What I'm saying is that you did not have the capacity to be awarded millions and millions of pesos worth of contract, and that is where we find fault. Uh, not that you are dummy, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you had no funds available, you got this contract, you went to Mister Young and got funds from him, loaned funds from him. So, those are the facts.
But, Mister, Mister Chairman
I yield to Secretary Phil, sir.
We did deliver.
I yield to Senator Laxson.
Mister Chairman, uh, let me just, as we just, uh, finish, uh, Senator Laxson. And this is all contrary to what Michael Young said, that he never had any dealings with Farmali since May, since March seventeen. That is very patent, right, Mister Huang?
I, um, Mister Chairman, I do not understand why Mister Young would say that. I thought he did a good thing.
No, no, I think also to interpret, he was very clear, he said he never had any dealings with Farmali afterwards. And Mister Lincoln was really very evasive because he could not very well say Mister Young's name. And now, cut it out of the bag. And up to now, I am sorry, you're still being evasive. We want to know how much was given, and I'm expecting an honest answer before this committee considers whether to continue putting Mister Lincoln on, uh, under arrest.
Mister Chairman?
Mister Chairman, if I may, the two Farmalis are not the same family, so, I, I just need to clarify. The current, the family pharmacy corporation, its shareholders are accurate and honest.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Senator Laxson?
Yeah, going further, earlier, in his testimony under oath, Mister Young averred that he had nothing to do with the, the transactions made by Farmali except to introduce, uh, Mister Lincoln Ong to the Chinese supplier. So, I'd like to just put that on record again, just to emphasize that Mister Young himself has been very evasive, and he lied under oath, uh, before this committee, Mister Chairman, that's all.
That's what I, Mister Chairman, can we be heard?
Mister Cheban?
Can we be heard, Mister Chairman?
Let the chairman, uh, excuse me, Mister Young, you'll get your chance. Senator Laxson and Senator Delong are correct. And I thank, uh, so far, Mister Huang for coming straight. And, uh, now, what you have is a situation where, uh, it shows, shows that there was no capability to begin with, at least in the beginning, that the financial conditions of a contract with PSDBM was not met. I don't know about the technicals, that is another requirement, and the legal requirements. And now, uh, you're saying that, in effect, that Mister Lau, Mister Young actually lied to the committee. And that is not only by me, not only by Mister Laxson, not only by Mister Delong, not only by Senator Andoveras, but by the whole world who listen to you. We all heard the same thing, alright? Go ahead, now you may answer.
Just, just, just for the record, just for the record, Mister Chairman, on the record, from April sixteen to April twenty, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, for a period of five days, Farmali got a total of two-hundred-eighty-seven-million, eight-hundred-sixty-thousand worth of contracts on a six-hundred-twenty-five-thousand capitalization. That's why, uh, uh, all the protestations of, uh, of, uh, Mister Lau uh, will not, uh, cover the fact that there was undue favor granted to Farmali who was not qualified at all, whether, uh, by any standard, to be awarded two-hundred-eighty-seven-million, uh, uh, eight-hundred-sixty-thousand in a period of five days, uh, from, uh, April sixteen to twenty. And that is why, they had probably to borrow money from Mister Young. It's just a question of trying to find out how much money they borrowed and how much interest they paid. I don't think Mister Young is a philanthropist who will lend to them, uh, huge amounts of money. Well, thank you, Mister Chairman, that's all the record.
Mister Chairman?
Uh, just a moment, for the record, I would just like to expand on what Senator Delong said, and I've shown this earlier. By May four, or by, let's say, April twenty-three, after those weekly transactions made by PSDBM with Farmali, they had already ramped up one billion, eight-hundred-seventy-five million. One-point-eight billion. That is what they have ramped up. And by May eighth, twenty-twenty, they ramped up a total, and that includes now the famous Phil Health, uh, the, uh, PPEs of costing three-point-eighty-two billion, and when you add that to one-point-eight billion, that went, the whole month of March, uh, April rather, April, they ramped up five-point-six, five-billion-six-hundred-ninety-seven-million. Uh, Mister Frank, Senator Frank, and if you go
Yes, I stand corrected, yes.
And if you go on to June nine, uh, in a period of two months, Senator Delong, they ramped up a total of eight-point-five-billion pesos. And so much for Mister Young not, uh, helping out, uh, and not interfering or not even having any dealings with Farmali. Uh, yes, Mister Young, you may now answer.
Okay,你可以回复
Uh, you should, you should say, oh,
Hmm. Okay, Mister Chairman, what Mister Young is saying, uh, on the earlier part, in terms of, uh, how, uh, in, in the earlier part of the contracts that Farmali, uh, obtained their contracts, we have totally nothing to do with those transactions. Only towards latter, uh, we did introduce, and, and eventually, uh, when they had difficulty, we introduced them to friends who helped them make those advances. Sorry, Mister Chairman?
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, go ahead. So, it's not true that since March seventeen, you have not had any dealings with Farmali?
I'm sorry again, Mister Chairman?
So, since March seventeen, when you met in Davao with the president, what you said is you never had any dealings with Farmali, and now you're saying that in the whole, uh, proceedings And now you're saying that in the whole, uh, proceedings afterwards, they needed money, and you provided them with the money.
Mister Chairman is.
Quite clear.
Yeah, Mister Chairman.
Do you understand English? You're already raising your hand. It has not been translated yet.
No, we have, we have been translating.
You understand English, Mister Young, right?
No, we've been translating, Mister Chairman.
No, no, you were not. You're listening to me.
On mute, Mister Chairman, we were translating.
Oh, come on. Thank you, go ahead, Mister Young. Now you're on mute.
要怎么说?
We're not happy about what's going on here.
Okay, Mister, Mister Chairman, what Mister Young would like to express is that there are two different Farmali that's been registered. One was twenty-seventeen, which is totally different from the one that, uh, is in question right now. Which is Farmali Pharmaceutical, the one in twenty-seventeen was Farmali Biological. These two are different companies, Mister Chairman.
And, uh.
If I may, I mean, the, the argument doesn't hold, Mister Chairman, sorry.
Go ahead, you answer it. I don't want to answer it, go ahead.
It doesn't hold, uh, as earlier manifested by Senator Laxson, that he said he only introduced the suppliers and had nothing else to do with that after the introduction of the suppliers and, uh, Mr. Lincoln Ong. And now we find out, belatedly, that he was also one of the funders and the creditors, as admitted, so it, it, the, the argument, the Farmali of twenty-seventeen and the Farmali of twenty-twenty-one different. Let's not hold water in the, in view of the earlier testimony that he did not, he only said he introduced them, and that's it, uh, uh, which is obviously false.
Mister Chairman.
Before I answer that.
Manifestation.
The chair certainly warns the interpreter of Mister Young, you do not put it on mute.
Sorry.
You do not put it on mute when you're translating.
Okay, sorry, Mister Chairman.
We have a backup interpreter here, precisely why the chairman got another interpreter.
Sorry, I apologize for that, Mister Chairman.
Just telling you, in no uncertain terms, I hold you in contempt.
I apologize, Mister Chairman.
You do not mute.
Okay.
All right. Senator Monteveros.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, just a quick manifestation that, um, although, toto na magkahiwalay na kumpanya ang Farmali Pharmaceuticals at saka Farmali Biologicals, hindi pa rin, uh, off the hook sa inquiry na ito, Mister Chairman, kahit ang Farmali Biologicals because of the role of Ms. Rose Nonolin in that company. So mas itatanong ko pa yun, uh, when my turn comes, Mister Chairman. Salamat, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chair, just, just very quickly, I'm, I'm still waiting for.
Senator Pangirinan, please continue.
Yes, thank you. I, I asked earlier about the, uh, uh, the extraction kits that came four months, April, May, ju, three months after the RT, uh, PCR kits. You cannot use the PCR kits without the extraction. But the delivery was four, three months apart. Uh, this is precisely why we're concerned about the capacity of Farmali. Uh, whether it's financial or, uh, in its expertise in delivering the needed, uh, equipment, the needed, uh, supplies that would help us address the, the, uh, spread of the virus. Uh, the information, I will repeat, that was relayed to us, was the delivery of the PCR test kits in April was, could not be used because the extraction, uh, equipment was not present. If Farmali was a reputable company, I would like to think they would have delivered both the extraction kit and the PPE, uh, RT-PCR kit so that they could be used immediately. Uh, that's why we're clarifying this, and, uh, uh, a USEC from, uh, from DOH, uh, should be able to clarify this, and also the, uh, the, uh, RITM. Is it true that the RITM had no use for those testing kits that were delivered in April? Or pretty much were useless because the extraction, uh, uh, equipment, uh, uh, was not, uh, delivered at the same time?
Mister Chairman, I, uh, believe, uh, that, uh, Director Sanya Carlos is already on board. Uh, kindly acknowledge her, uh, Director Sanya Carlos, please. RITM, RITM, Sanya Carlos.
And, and, uh, is she there now? And, and, uh, before she answers, just for the record, earlier, Mister, uh, Hang, Hang, was it Hang, said that they had the LTO, which is a license to operate. Yes, they did, but their license to operate in, uh, at that time was for drugs, importation of drugs, not of medical devices. The importation of, the license to import medical devices came in January of twenty-twenty-one. FDA gave them that license to import medical devices in January of twenty-twenty-one. They didn't have that license when they brought in these PPEs. Uh, they had a license for drugs, importation of drugs, not medical devices. So again, maybe Mister Hang is, uh, Wang is being misled or being given information that is incomplete. Now we go to, uh, DOH, can you answer, please, DOH? Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, uh, Senator, um, we, we are basing on recall, because we don't have the documents with us right now, but uh, as far as we recalled in the first SEM of twenty-twenty, there were indeed stockouts of extraction kits. Uh, we had difficulty having this available, and, uh, ho- however, our operations in RITM at least did not stop. Uh, we had enough, uh, PCR kits since there were donations coming in, but there were times that we, we really had very, um, limited stops of the extraction kits, that's all.
In other words, you had the testing kits, but your extraction kits were limited uh, from, uh, March, April, May. And then by June, maybe end of June, the extraction kits finally arrived. Uh, and that's when you, I mean, the bulk, and that's when you were able to use those earlier delivered uh, uh, testing kits, because finally the extraction kits that was necessary uh, to use to be able to test properly was, uh, given. So you're, you're placing that on record. We have the data, we have the information, we, the deli, the delivery, the delivery receipt and the inspection reports, uh, and the record will bear us out. Uh, if I may, just put it on record, uh, in, uh, April of twenty-twenty, dated April twenty-one, the RT-PCR test kits, two thousand of them, amounting to six hundred eighty-eight million, uh, arrived. No, and, uh, there was an inspection report, the documents are with us. And then, in June ten of twenty-twenty, so April to May, May to June, two months later, no, uh, the extraction kits arrived at two hundred forty-five million. So those, uh, kung mahusay yung, uh, Farmali at alam nila yung ginagawa nila, hindi dapat dinelay, dapat sinabay yung dalawa para magamit, yun ang ating punto rito. Uh, kung siguro, mas may kapasidad sila at na-check yung kanilang kakayahan, at naiintindihan nila yung negosyo. Naiintindihan nila yung usapin ng ano bang medical devices ang importante, ano ang kinakailangan, eh, baka hindi na-delay yung testing. At dahil na-delay yung testing, nagre-reklamo sa akin, tatlong LGU, wala daw silang magamit na, na RT-PCR testing kits, kasi wala nga yung extraction. Uh, and this was, uh, in, uh, March, uh, and April. Anyway, that's, uh, we, we thank the DOH for clarifying that. Uh, and this also goes to the question of the capacity of the DBMPS. And the, I, I apologize, but, uh, even the, this should have been, uh, raised immediately, that bakit wala yung extraction kit, nun dineliver yung, uh, yung, uh, six hundred eighty-eight million pesos worth of test kits, hindi ba? Uh, and yung DBMPS, si Mister Ouyan was the one who was, uh, OIC inspection. Uh, were you familiar with this, that you were actually purchasing testing kits that, uh, had little or no use without the extraction kit?
Uh, Mister Chairman, if I may, the, the records will show that the test kits were indeed, uh, awarded on April. However, the records will also show that, uh, the extraction kits were indeed uh, awarded on June. Now, we only procure based on the APR as submitted by the DOH. So if the.
But you, you were the one who inspected, you were chief of inspection.
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Did you not, did you not, or, you're a lawyer, you're not a medical technologist, or you're, you don't have any background in, in, uh, medical devices, so I, I would think you probably didn't know that you needed the extraction kit. I wouldn't know, I'm a lawyer, diba? Uh, but that's the whole point. The DBMPS had no expertise, relied perhaps on the DOH, baka pa yung kung DOH ang nagbid nito, maiintindihan nila yung pinag, yung usapin ng ano yung devices na kailangan isabay na bilhin. At siguro kung Farmali, uulitin ko, kung expert talaga, eh, dapat alam nila, dapat sinabi nila, hindi niyo pwedeng gamitin yung testing kit kung wala yung extraction. Diba? And time was of the essence, we were, we were, we needed to test and we needed to trace. And we got six hundred eighty-eight million pesos worth, at least based on the current, based on the explanation and the, and the data and the documents, we got six hundred eighty-eight million pesos worth of testing kits that were useless for two months. Now, the other question is, were they expired by then? I don't know. Uh, how, you know, uh, was there an expiry date on the testing kits? Was this check? That, I'm told, may mga expiry ang, uh, mga kits na yan, so baka mag-e-expire na nung binili, dapat mas mura. But of course, I, I'm just placing that on record, uh, for, for the guidance of the, of the chair, uh. I'd like to go back to Mister Lincoln, uh, just for a few questions, Mister, uh, Lincoln, uh, Ong. Uh, so lumalabas yung agreement na sinasabi ninyo, na pinirmahan ninyo, Mister Ong, eh, may, at may money, ano yan, may money consideration, kasi nga utang, uh, pinonduhan, et cetera, tama po ba yun?
Tama po, Mister Chair.
Okay, so ngayon.
Pero, uh, Mister Chairman, pwede ko po ba ma-iclarify na maayos?
Uh, may mamaya na, sige, mayroon pa ako ibang mga ano eh, sino ang nag-suggest?
Uh, with the permission of Senator Pangirinan.
Yes.
I think there is a, uh, I will let you continue. Uh, but we would like to have a recess for one hour for dinner. Uh, because this is going to be a long hearing, and you will continue after the recess. I think it is important that, uh, uh, some of the senators also would like to talk uh, to each other, uh, so that the next hour will be very important, if that is okay with you. Otherwise, I will let you finish.
No, no, it's okay, I will, uh, I will yield to the chair's, uh, uh, motion that we suspend.
I cannot move, you have to move.
Sorry, uh, suggestion, uh, and we will move that we suspend, uh, upon the advice of the chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, uh, I, I see, the, the Senator Vares, are you seconding, seconding the motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I second the motion.
There's no objection, so we will, it's now seven, uh, seven minutes after seven, we will, uh, come back at seven minutes after eight. Uh, so, uh, all you kind hearts and gentle people who have the highest interest of the country, and if you want to listen, we will be back seven minutes after eight o'clock, so all of you can have a very, very, uh, you know, collected dinner, if you will. Thank you very much. And we will now recess. Session is suspended until seven after eight.
be the source of more stress for him at this time. Uh maybe we can uh suspend uh or uh uh suspend the hearing and then resume on Monday. Um I I have a number of questions that might be uh precisely uh would focus on Mr. Lincoln as well as uh uh the inspection reports uh of the quality and and it might take a a longer time, Mr. Mr. Chairman, so uh I we don't want, you know, our resource person to uh to not be able to uh uh well, you know, he he has COVID, he has to rest.
Oh.
I want to further strain him, but we we hope uh we we if we can resume next week, Mr. Mr. Chairman, then uh proceed with the questions uh and give the uh uh Mr. Lincoln uh Ong the chance to rest uh over the weekend. Uh uh Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh since I'm on deck, uh uh I I don't want to be the one, Mr. Chairman, to uh continue to stress him out at this point, knowing that he has COVID. Uh but I'd like to, we're all interested in the truth. Let's get him to rest over the weekend and then we can resume uh Monday or Tuesday, whenever the chairman calls it, uh so that we can resume the the uh the the hearings, Mr. Mr. Uh Mr. Chairman.
Uh thank you. Uh the chair, uh thank you, Senator Kiko Wangdinan. Uh I I kind of agree with you uh that uh he has COVID and the Senate is uh we have a lot of humanitarian people in the Senate and we're not going to stress him in such a way that uh he already is in enough stress. I'm sure a lot of people are hounding him right now after what he has said here and what uh Mr. Wong has already stated. And uh uh he is under arrest. That's the parliamentary situation right now.
Yes.
And I'd like to see Senate President Sotoi see him. Uh if he can give me the thumbs up, he's already under arrest. So my position, Mr. Chairman, for the recommended to the body is that uh we send the USAHA there uh so that he will not be allowed to go out, uh and he will be there. Uh and if he has to go out, uh uh we have to provide an ambulance for him in case he gets sick. But as far as I'm concerned, Mr. President, uh although he's under arrest, uh there will be custodial guards there to watch him. I uh I hereby order, for example, uh for hereby order uh uh Mr. Lincoln Ong, are you there, Mr. Lincoln Ong?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I want you to send me your uh or send the committee secretary, uh the director general, uh Mr. Kimbo. Uh Director General Kimbo, you have the number of Mr. Lincoln Ong?
We have his we have his contact email, your honor.
Contact email. I need his cell phone. I need his cell phone.
He he can, for privacy sake, sir, he can he can email that to us on his address too.
I want you to uh I want to request you to send your to uh call Mr. Uh the Director General so that it will be confidential where you are. Uh and uh send him your number and your address right away. Is that okay with you, Mr. Ong?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, for understanding. Thank you. I will do that.
We're not monsters here. We're trying to uh just find the truth and that's all we want to do. We're not monsters here, we're trying to uh, just find the truth and that's all we want to do. Uh, thank you, and the moment that Director General Ong, uh, Director General Kimbo has stated that you've sent him the address, your address and your phone number, you'll be, uh, you'll have custody, custodial, uh, people from the USAHA, uh, our security group in the Senate, uh, so that you can be uh, protected as well as placed under effective custody of the Senate without bringing you to uh, the proper place of custody. Now, you must remember that uh, under decided cases, you can be placed by the Senate in a, in any uh, jail that uh, would be, are choosing, so long as you are comfortable and have safe keep, uh, not comfortable, but certainly under safekeeping. Uh, Senator Riza, you have a comment please?
Sir Chair, yes, um, I'm, I'm not going to object to that, but just two quick points, the first, the, the Chairman is actually already um, asserting that it will happen. I just wanted to say in a, the, the motion to place under arrest that per, that person, uh, which was moved and seconded and, and carried by the committee, I'm assured that it will be done, uh, tonight. And then pangalawa, Mr. Chairman, of course, I still would like to, um, I'm still in line to ask questions, I still would like to ask questions of our resource persons. Uh, hopefully Rose Nono Lim, if she will appear upon Sabina in the committee. Questions for Mr. Michael Yang, for Mr. Huang Suyen, for former USEC Lloyd Lau, and for USEC, uh, Waiyan. Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, that I still want to ask them questions on Monday.
And the, and the, and Mr. Liang, right? Uh,
Mr. Liang.
Mr. Liang is the former Undersecretary that is now in the ombudsman.
M- Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Laxson, is it, yeah, Mr. Laxson?
Yes, I would like just to manifest, uh, my support to the manifestation of Senator Rizan Teberos, that instead of suspending the hearing as a, as a emotion of Senate Pangilinan, why don't we just excuse Mr. Lincoln Ong, uh, for today's or tonight's hearing and let's continue with the uh, questions, uh, to be propounded to the other resource persons. Because Mr. Wang, uh, testified on something that's very significant and interesting before we go on break, uh, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, I, uh, while, while I yield the floor to Senator Teberos to propound her questions, I will reserve to ask, uh, also my questions and I'd like to address those questions to Mr. Wang. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, points are well taken, uh. Let me uh, uh, just ask the other members of the committee what they think about it, uh. Because uh, we can continue, but uh, we can also continue Monday. Uh,
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, um,
Senator Jilong, oh yes, I'm sorry, Senator Jilong, I, I, Senator Senate President Soto is raising his hand, I, you understand?
Yes.
Senator Soto?
I agree with, uh, our colleagues, uh, we can excuse, uh, practically, not really excuse, uh, Mr. Ong, because if you saw order and it is within the power of the Senate, uh, a, a person who is, uh, under arrest can be designated to be kept somewhere and the designation that I, I, I hear from you is his residence, his place of residence. Therefore, uh, we can excuse him and we will make sure that the uh, office of the Sergeant-at-Arms, um, keeps him safe, uh, wherever he is, you know, um. And then, uh, we could perhaps give another hour for, uh, for some of the others so that we can get rid of the other, uh, questions already by our colleagues. And then you can resume on Monday or Tuesday for the rest. Perhaps, uh, just give a, a little more time to our colleagues.
Yes, uh, thank, thank you, sir. Senate President, Senator, uh, Jilong?
Well, I will be candid to my good friends, Senator Ping and Senator Soto, Senate President. Pagodnapo ako, may di na binire. So, if it will not harm our hearings, may I propose that we suspend until Monday, uh. You know, I don't think it will do our, our, our hearings any harm if we just, uh, rest for the weekend, have resume on Monday morning and, uh, and, and call back the resource persons. That's my submission, I am willing to submit, uh, to the Chair, uh, on this point.
Uh, the Chair will have a ruling with the, uh, permission of my Senate President, our Senate President. Uh, and with, uh, with all due respect, I think the points of Senator Laxson are also well taken. And I think many of us are tired, you can see by the voices and by everyone, it's not only Senator Jilong is tired. So, uh, uh, insofar as this representation is concerned, my feeling is that we should adjourn another, a recess until Monday morning. Uh, give everybody a chance to rest. Uh, uh, the, as I said, the parliamentary situation is that Mr. Yang and Mr. Uh, uh, Ong is under arrest, uh, from the Senate and, uh, uh, with the permission again of the Senate President, I'd like to send some, uh, USAHA people, uh, over there to where he's at and, uh, uh, put a guard under him, uh, for the next, uh, uh, few days until, uh, we are ready to go again on Monday and, uh, depending on, uh, uh, what transpires. It has been a good day, as far as I'm concerned. Yes, Senator Riza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, since it looks like, uh, we, uh, by the words of the Chairman, that we will be suspending, but just to express my, maraming salamat po, uh, to Senator Ping. Salamat po, salamat, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Senator Jilong, did you raise your hand?
Oh, yes, I didn't.
I thought you did.
Yeah, and I didn't.
Uh, just to be sure, and please guide the Chair if I forget something. Like I said, uh, these people are under, uh, Senate contempt, con- they're under contempt and they're under arrest. Although insofar as the, uh, Mr. Ong is concerned, he has COVID and we will not, uh, out of humanitarian consideration, we'll let him stay in his home. And I'm still waiting for the signal from the Director General whether he's gotten the address already. Uh, uh, Mr. Ong, have you sent your address and your cellphone to, uh, the Director General?
Sir, it has not reached me yet.
Aye. Mr. Ong?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, nakikinig pa pa ako sa, sa Senate hearing. Sige po, i-reach out to, uh, uh, Director Kimbo, nauna.
Please do it right now, because I might change my mind.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, okay.
So, I'm doing this to protect you, uh, because of what transpired this afternoon and for others, no? Uh, so, send it and as soon as, uh, put it forward by the Director General, uh, that he has gotten it, uh, we will, uh, proceed, uh, with what, uh, has been suggested here today. Suffice it to say that it has been a good day. All the senators have been given a chance, all the witnesses have been given a chance to expand on what they want to say. And, uh, I think, uh, uh, we thank, uh, uh, Mr. Wang for coming out and making a, a statement that really, uh, comes out, uh, as we reach closer to the truth. And as they say, the truth will all set us free. And, uh, Mr. Wang is a young man, he's got a great future ahead and he should start clean, along with Mr. Lincoln Chen, uh, Lincoln Ong as well. So, uh, the, uh, the Chair would like to announce to everybody that all of you will have to come back on Monday on, on, on our WebEx and, uh, we can all, uh, call on you, uh, to continue with the hearing. It's a very difficult hearing, as you can see. Uh, a lot of issues have to be undertaken. And I'm just speaking out here so that, uh, uh, the Director General can inform me if he has already gotten, uh, the text message.
Not yet, your honor, still waiting.
Well.
Sir, Sir Chairman, he can send the,
I did not, yes.
Nagiemail pa po ako, sir, pakichek naman, please.
He, he can also send a private message to Mr., to Attorney Kimbo, uh, through the,
We're checking the email now, we're opening the email.